March 13th meeting of the San Carlos City Council Redevelopment Agency. Would you all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of America, one nation, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
The council did meet in closed session to hear legal counsel on existing litigation and pending litigation, and we took no action. Item two on the agenda is changes to the order of the agenda. Do we have any requested changes?
Not to the order, no.
None, council members? No? Okay. Item three is report from closed session. Already did that, sorry. Bob, do you have anything to add there? It does say...
No, Mr. Mayor. There's no reportable action out of closed session.
Thank you. Didn't think so, but just wanted to be sure. Item four is council communications and announcements. Let me start down here with Bob.
Don't have anything.
Nothing? Okay. Tom?
I have no reports, but just a matter of communication primarily for staff. And this regards the trash collectors, the trash containers on Laurel Street. I've noticed in the last some months that they're filled overflowing by the time we get around to collect and pick them up. And I'm wondering if we could have more pickups, or perhaps more containers, or perhaps some of both. And if we could take a look at that and give us a report later on, that'd be great.
Seattle?
That's it.
Thank you, Tom. Brad? Nothing? Inga?
I just wanted to note that I do have a conflict for the meeting on April 3rd that's been noticed in, I guess, in tonight's agenda. So will not be here on April 3rd for the Joint City Council Planning Commission meeting for the EIR for PAMF. So I don't know if that can be rescheduled, but...
We've already rented... Hello? We've already rented a facility, Hiller Museum. It's supposed to go two nights at least. Anticipate there's not going to be that much public comment on it. There'll be primarily a staff report, EIR consultant report the first night, and then starting public comment, commentary on the EIR, and then it would go through the second night and maybe even a third night. We're ready to go one more night if necessary to get all the public comment in.
Okay. So just as perhaps a matter of policy, maybe we can check dates before they get scheduled to make sure that council members will be in town.
And excuse me, Mr. Mayor, just to, as long as we're reporting conflicts, I think, as I've already mentioned, I'm going to be in Bologna, Italy on the 27th of March as required by work, and I won't be able to attend that meeting. I'm making arrangements to try to connect via broadband internet connection, but anyway, I just wanted to make sure that you and all were aware of that.
The turf meeting.
Yes.
So...
So we'll just have further discussion about that. I just want to report that tonight.
Yes, okay. Thank you. I had a couple of items to report on. One is I went to go see the doctor because when I sit here and look down at my report, I can't see it anymore, so I'm of that age. Thanks, Bob. Yeah, that's right. I wanted to report that we had two of our tutors from our Healthy Cities program recognized at the California Parks and Recreation Society District Four banquet on February 16th. Forbes King and Ken Anderson were chosen in recognition of their long-term commitment to the Healthy Cities program. So congratulations to Forbes King and Ken Anderson. And the other item I wanted to report on is I met with some folks from the Housing Industry Foundation, and I was not aware of this. This is a nonprofit that's put together by the Tri-County Apartment Association. And at that meeting that I had with them, a lunch meeting, I learned about their nonprofit, the Housing Industry Foundation. And a couple of interesting things here about that is they have emergency housing grants of up to $1,000 to help folks pay rent or mortgage or utilities in emergency situations. They also do security deposit grants for similar reasons and have other programs. And if anyone is interested in that, they can check out their website. It's the typical www.hifinfo.org. And I also attended a breakfast that was put on by the organization that used to be Faces, and I forget the other organization, that they joined together and they became the Family Services. And I'm sorry, I'm forgetting the actual name of it. But interestingly enough, they also have a web-based program that they do with teenagers to help other teenagers who are in crisis situations. And I'm sorry, I thought I had my notes on that, and I don't. So I'm going to announce that at our next council meeting, because I thought it was a really important program that they have. I'll just explain it a little bit here. They have teenagers that man email booths, if you will, and other teenagers who are in some kind of crisis mode can email in and get support that way. And they talked about why teenagers today like to do the email as opposed to the phone because there's more anonymity with that. And teenagers just simply like using, you know, their little Palm Pilots and things like that to talk to each other. And so it has proven to be a very successful program. So I'll bring more information on that at our next meeting and talk about that just a little bit. I like to let the community know about those kinds of things that we find out about when we go to different kinds of meetings and lunches and breakfasts and so forth. So that's, those are my reports. Next is item 6A, which is a status report on Parks for the Future Countywide Funding Effort.
Matt, I think you passed over 5A.
Did I skip something?
You did.
You're right. I'm sorry. We will back up and go to 5A. Thank you. You guys keep me on my toes. See, I told you I can't see my material here, so... 5A is reports to council, and we do have one item in particular here listed, which is strategic plan, monthly report and presentation. And it looks like Jeff Maltby, our deputy city manager, is going to give that report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Tonight, we thought we would begin our monthly updates for the city's strategic plan. These updates are going to take place each month at the first council meeting of the month. As you're aware, on February 13th, the council staff, the city treasurer, and city clerk got together and developed the city's first strategic plan. On February 27th, the council adopted this plan. As part of the strategic plan, you developed five three-year goals. They are increase revenue, update general plan and east side and west side specific plans, attract, develop, and retain quality staff, improve infrastructure, improve internal and external customer service and communication. As part of the, to achieve these five three-year goals, you developed 18 six-month objectives. Implementation progress is being tracked on the matrix attached to the staff report. Of the 18 goals, 17 are on target. One has been postponed a couple of weeks. That's the interview and appoint the Creek and Watershed Advisory Committee. This item and the relocation of City Hall item are on tonight's agenda later on for further discussion. In addition to the goals and objectives, a list of nine next steps was developed. Four of the nine have been completed, including several items related to communicating the plan to staff and the public, which has been accomplished, as well as providing council with preliminary cost estimates for the six-month objectives. That's also part of the matrix. We will continue to monitor and closely update council with the progress of these objectives, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Jeff. Any questions, council?
I had a question, Jeff, regarding how we fund what we don't have money for. Is that coming later, or how do we address that?
That is, as we continue to try to fine-tune that. That is going to come later, and I think it's going to have to come soon. As you can see, in most instances, we feel we're able to fund it within the existing budget. And that may become likely of a few additional items that currently we haven't been able to identify a funding source for. But we'll come back each month to you and get more detailed on that as we go along.
And the second issue is, can you differentiate the market study from the economic development plan? It would seem to me that there's a lot of interchange here between the two, and perhaps they can be combined into one. I don't know. But can you define each one?
I think I would defer to the city manager or Laura Snideman, the Economic Development Director, on that question.
Through the chair, the plan there is to do the economic development plan after we do the market study. The market study actually is the foundation from which much of the planning activity will take. It'll identify where there might be sales tax leakage. It'll identify where there are, is market potential that we can use as a stepping stone for creating the economic development plan. And so that's why we're proposing to do the one first, followed by the economic development plan later.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Excuse me. And it was my impression, we were talking in a small group about that, that that might be a good demarcation point for us to have a council discussion on some of the market study items as a result of getting that information before we go to the next plan. So it'd be great if we said, I think, May 15th is on here. Maybe we can try to get that on the following agenda so we can read that and talk a little bit about it. Because it may be, there may be some things that we could start to move on as far as aggressively trying to get revenue into the city at that point or start to discuss that.
Just again, through the chair, I think that's a good point. A couple of things come to mind. Number one, I do believe that the consultant will probably want to interview council members and get your input on where you see our market potential is, where you see the city's potential might be. There will be other interviews and analysis as part of creating that economic, or that market study. Secondarily, I should point out that it's a living document. Don't hold me to that May 15th date. It's there. It may take us an extra 30 days, but there would be no problem. And matter of fact, we would encourage bringing that study back to you once we have it so that we can talk about it as a jumping point for the economic development plan.
Okay. Inga?
Yeah, I had just a follow-in question, actually to Tom David's question about where do we get the money. It seems to me that what we're missing here is more of a holistic view of where the money is and how this all sort of ties into the budget. Can we, can you tell us when we expect to see more of a holistic view so that as some of these options come up, we may decide to make trade-offs?
I think during the normal budget process is when you'll be faced with making a number of different trade-offs citywide. There are some things within this plan that we're able to do out of some salary savings, for example, that have not been expanded. We've had a Community Development Director position open for the better part of the year. And so that might be one source of funding for the, for the market study, for example. We've been just discussing at the staff level, trying to put numbers to this. And it's very preliminary stage, and so we would hope to come back within a month's time and have a more definitive plan for you as to where the funding sources will be and how we plan on addressing each of these. Some of these may indeed need, need to be deferred if there aren't monies that allow us to move forward with them. And we would do that as part of the normal budgeting process. There are some of these that are scheduled to occur in August, and I would fully expect that you'll have a decision to make as part of the budgeting process that'll occur in May and June as to whether or not these items should remain in the budget or in the strategic plan or not. And then we would plan to have another planning session, I believe it was August 14th, if memory serves me correctly.
My concern is, is that with what we have coming up with potentially an increase in funding required for South County Fire, you know, it may not be enough that we're deferring a position to help offset one of these when in fact we may be net negative at the end of the day anyway. So that's why I'm looking for more of a holistic view. It's all well and fine that we've got a strategic plan, which I think is wonderful. I just want to see how it fits into the overall funding picture, because some of these things, you know, and I look at, for example, the west side specific plan and the general plan updates. Those have some fairly significant price tags associated with them, and it may be that we will have to, as a council, make some determination about timing on that. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Those are all the questions. Thank you, Jeff. Appreciate it. That does bring us to item 6A, which is a status report on Parks for the Future Countywide Funding Effort. Julia Bott, Executive Director, San Mateo County Parks and Recreation Foundation.
Julia Bott is right here. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm Julia Bott, Executive Director of the San Mateo County Parks and Recreation Foundation. And thank you for giving me some time tonight. I know you have a pretty busy agenda, so I'll try to run through this. Hopefully, you've all been given a pretty detailed staff report, which should answer most of your questions in advance. What is Parks for the Future? Parks for the Future is an effort to provide dedicated funding for all of the parks in our community. Our approach to find this dedicated funding is through a proposed ballot measure to increase our sales tax by one-eighth of a cent. This ballot measure would need to be approved by two-thirds of those voting in the election. It would not require two-thirds of any individual city's voters, however. Tonight, I want to go over briefly why we need the measure, what our process has been, what our decisions have been, and our next steps. And I also want to get your input. We're pretty far down the line, and we're starting to actually write the ballot measure right now. You're on the tail end of the presentations that have been going on since November, but there is still always room to get additional input. The benefit of parks, you know, parks are really more than just green spaces, butterflies, flowers. They're really key to the physical and social health of our community. They help our youth programs, they help our senior programs. The benefit of parks goes across all levels of our community. But unfortunately, they've not been funded at adequate levels. And you've already talked about the hard fiscal decisions that you need to make. This is always a problem that is facing city leaders, and often because parks and recreation are easily cut, they are the first to be cut. People don't consider them mandated service, and sometimes they're not mandated by other agencies. And social and public safety needs often come first. For this reason, we are looking to find dedicated funding. San Mateo County has had significant cuts. While our budget has stayed stable for the past two years, the previous years, we've had significant cuts resulting in the loss of staff, the closure of some parks midsummer, midweek, midsummer. A couple of years ago, Edgewood was affected by that. And Edgewood, while it's a regional park, also serves as a community park where people go for a run or a walk when they don't have time to get far away from the busy hectic life that we lead. We also have over $100 million in deferred maintenance and capital improvement needs. San Carlos has similar needs, and not just looking to what our cuts have been, but looking to what your vision is. You have park phases that are yet to be funded. You have additional park land that you're looking, that people are asking you to add to your communities for your community benefit, and you have no trail maintenance and have additional needs in that area. Together, I'll run through most of these decisions now and go through the detail of how we got there in the following slides. As I said, our decision on the funding mechanism is pursue an increase of one-eighth cent in the sales tax. In order to do this, we needed enabling legislation. We were successful in getting that enabling legislation with the passage of SB 203 last November. We decided not to form a special district. If any of you came to the meeting in March of 2004, that was what we had originally thought. And hearing the input on that, we went back and took a look at some different approaches. I do have to say that we've had very good participation from the city of San Carlos, both from council members, commissioners, and staff all along in this process. It's been very helpful. We've looked at what the governance duties would be, and since we don't have to spend, form a special district, and since the sales tax money could be distributed per a formula, we don't really need, the role of a governance or whatever board would manage this would be purely fiduciary. And we've looked at CCAG to be that body. And at their meeting last week, they conceptually agreed to be the ones to manage this as long as all the details are ironed out in advance and it's not a policy issue for them. One of the things that we did decide is that the funds are strictly for parks and recreation programs. However, we don't want to tell the cities how to spend their money. Sales tax is very flexible. You can use it for acquisition, for capital, for programming, for operations, for staffing. And we want you to be able to use it as your city asks you to use it and as you see is in the best use for your city. So we are not dictating how, as long as you use it for your parks and recreation programs. If those include your senior lunch programs, if some cities actually maintain their medians, their street medians with parks and recreation funding, if that falls within your current programming, then that would be eligible for this funding. One of the toughest things we decided was the formula for distribution, and I'll go into that in just a second. We have a three-way distribution with an amount going to the county, amount to be distributed to the cities, and then an amount to the special districts, which include Mid Peninsula Open Space District, Ladera, and Recreation Highlands District. For the sub-formula for distributing to the cities, we looked at a variety of factors, and we did come up with a base amount for small cities and then a per capita distribution based on the formulas or the approach used in the State Park Bond Act. We chose this because there was no common denominator. We looked at existing programming, acres of parks, existing budgets, past budget cuts, how many people use your facilities, and across the cities, there was no common denominator. So we had to adopt the approach that we took. Recently, we actually determined a maintenance of effort approach. We know that in order to get two-thirds that support from the voters, that we will have to show them that cities and the county are accountable with these funds. And we want, they will want to know that these funds are supplementing existing park budgets, not supplanting them. The approach that we're using for maintenance of effort again recognizes the fiscal constraints that cities are often faced with. And so while we're asking that, and the approach is to maintain your base general fund revenue contributions to your parks and recreation budgets, except in times of fiscal crisis, and then we recognize you might have to make cuts. And as long as your cuts to parks and recreation are no greater than any other non-public safety departments, then you're maintaining your maintenance of effort. Why did we choose the Acent sales tax? We chose it for a number of reasons. The first thing is we did conduct a poll, and it turned out that we had the greatest degree of support for that. With the probabilities and the definitlies combined, we had 76% for an increase of one-eighth cent. We didn't have that level of support for parcel taxes or benefit assessments. And actually, the other reason that we did it was because of the amount of revenue that we would receive. And it brings in about $16 million annually, using 2002 figures. If we, the best we could have gotten through a parcel tax would have been about $4 to $5 million annually. Parcel taxes are usually used by cities, school districts, so we didn't want to compete with those also. So a sales tax was a good option. The cost per person is approximately $18 annually. We've done, this is based on a formula that the Trust for Public Land helped us do in our feasibility study. And if you look at where our sales tax is, we're pretty much right in the middle of all the neighboring counties' sales tax. Santa Clara would seem to be lower, but as you know, they are now considering a half-cent increase in their sales tax. We were concerned about that because we wanted to make sure that there wasn't going to be a flight of commerce. With respect to the allocation of funds, 52% would go to the cities, 42% would go to the county, and 6% would go to the special district. The compromise to get to this formula was that any growth over 4% would not be enjoyed by the county. That would only be distributed to the cities and the special district. So that means that these percentages would actually change over whatever the life of the measure is. It's hard to say upfront what they would be. Sales tax, the annual, if you average out the growth over the past 10 years, it is more than 4%, but some years it's only 3% and some years it's 8%. The projected base year distribution for San Carlos is just under $300,000. This would be using 2002 figures again with the administrative costs deducted. The timeline, you can see that we've been working hard, and the staff, commissioners, and council members who have been coming to these meetings have been very dedicated. Going to the second slide with the timeline, you can, getting to the end, to the bottom of this, really speaks to our next steps. And we are currently preparing ballot language. Our goal is to have a final version of the language to bring back to councils for review in May, June, and July. Because if we want to go to the November '06 ballot, and there was nothing in the enabling legislation that would require us to go to the November ballot, but we think it is one of our best bets, we need to have the Board of Supervisors place this measure on the ballot at their August meeting. Therefore, we do want to come back and get responses back from council in May, June, and July. We will be sending an interim draft to the city managers in advance of this just to make sure that there's no red flags or errors or omission. We're trying to make sure that we can sort of speed up the staff time review. Some of the items that we still have to address are the length of the measure or its sunset date. Really, the best thing would be have it longer because that gives you certainty. And if you're hiring staff or funding programs, you want to have certainty with these funds. Additionally, you could bond against the revenue, and a longer period of time is better for you also. However, we really do need to figure out what the voters will support. So we're still in a process of doing some polling and talking to some other folks to determine if the measure will, what length of the measure will be. It could be as little as 15 years as as many as 30 years. And with that, I'll just quickly go through the next steps, which I've pretty much talked about. We want to come back to you in the following months with the ballot language. We are forming grassroots committees to further this effort. We'll be doing education efforts, and we hope to be launching our political campaign after August to get this measure passed in November of '06. And with that, I can take any questions.
Okay. Do we have any questions?
I'll compliment Julia for her job well done. She's been shepherding this now for many months, and it's almost a pleasure to go to these meetings and deal with these issues, Julia.
Oh, thank you.
It's working well.
My pleasure.
Julie, I do have just a question or two. Very good presentation, by the way, very thorough. I was just curious about the funding formula, and if you could go into a little more detail on how that works. I did notice a number of cities, it looks like the base amount is 205, because I see a number of cities that are, would be potentially receiving 205, 205,000.
Yeah, those are what are generally referred to as the small cities within San Mateo County, and their population is somewhere between 1 and 6,000, 7,000 people. And in the original formulas, they were getting significantly less. In many cases, some of them were getting less than $100,000 through this, and some as little as 58,000. And they were significantly concerned because they have proportionately, their costs for parks and recreation may be greater because they, they still have to provide services. And even with sharing staff, they have, they have needs that they have to provide. So in looking at how to balance all of this out, and that was the same approach as used in the State Park Bond Act, because the same problem came up when they were trying to look to distribute within the county, within the state of California. So the group, through a consensus process, decided to adopt that approach.
So how does the formula work? It looks like up to a certain population, there's a guaranteed floor...
At this point, it looks like it's the minimum of 2005, and then the rest is a per capita distribution on that. We actually are working, I don't have the number right in front of me to be able to give it to you, but that has, that 2005 needs to actually be a percentage of what the overall distribution of the cities are in case the sales taxes, say, it comes in at $10 million one year. The small cities wouldn't be able to receive 205,000 because it would be disproportionate.
I would love to get a copy of that formula from you.
Yes.
Interesting to see how that works.
Yeah.
More reasons than just what you're showing us.
Yeah. These would be the, this is, this is the end result of those numbers.
Okay.
So that formula actually is, has to be, we're working on it, running a few calculations to make sure it's accurate. I'm using a couple of finance directors from other cities to do that. It's really, really what they're good at, more than I am. But that actually has to be spelled out in the ballot language.
And you mentioned under the duration of, you know, 25, 30, 15 years, whatever, about hiring staff. Now, it does say in the report that that would be minimized and possibility of using CCAG as a distributor of the funds. Can you comment on all that?
Yeah, I didn't mean that the, that would meant that each individual city would be able to hire staff with the funds that was given to their city. If they decided to add two more recreation programmers, or, you know, three city maintenance workers, or, you know, gardeners, or whatever is the appropriate staff person for your city, that you would be, each city would be allowed to do. We don't envision actually hiring any staff for this project. CCAG would be administering it. At this point, for calculations, we've been using 1% as a figure for administrative, but we figure it's probably closer to a half a percent. The Board of Equalization does take 5% right off the top.
And then one last question, if you will, sort of a question. Can you just comment who it is you're with so that, you know, you're on TV and people would like to know, I suppose, what organization exactly that you're with and so forth?
Sure. I always like to give my organization a plug. I'm with the San Mateo County Parks and Recreation Foundation, and we are a nonprofit organization. We were formed six years ago to raise money for San Mateo County parks. We've raised a little over $6 million for the parks in the six years that we've been in existence. But two things, it's really not enough to address all of the needs. It doesn't, and it also really doesn't address any city park needs. And our community has a variety of park needs, which is one reason that we're stepping up to try to bring this measure to the voters in November.
And just to clarify, your report is informational. If there is actually a... If there is actually a campaign, there would be a campaign committee that would be, you would be separate from?
Yes, exactly. At this point, we will be doing some education efforts, but until this actually becomes a ballot measure by a decision of the Board of Supervisors in August, we, it's not, it's not legally a campaign, but we are moving into setting up a campaign committee and following all the laws. Last thing I want to do is have that be our headline.
Thank you. I just wanted to give the opportunity for that to all be clear. This is, thank you very much.
I'm sorry, excuse me. I thought of one more question. I'm sorry. Pardon me. On the 25 to 30-year sunset versus the 15-year sunset, is it the Board of Supervisors that will make that decision? It says it's not yet determined. I guess, just for everybody's information, what's the legislative body that will make that decision?
Well, the Board of Supervisors is the one that would have a final say on everything, the one to place the ballot, the measure on the ballot. We're trying to determine exactly what that's going to be through some polling and some other conversations with supporters or those who may or not have taken a position. And basically, we're looking to see what the voters will support. We did bring this issue to the city managers groups. We've been talking to the city managers and to the parks directors, and in their pragmatic wisdom, they came back and said, well, we think longer is better, but do what the voters want.
Thank you.
I just actually had a quick follow-on question, actually two questions. First off, we currently have, what is it, Measure G that's been funding parks in San Carlos?
That's correct.
And when does that sunset, or when do we lose that funding?
It's a 10-year measure, and I think we're coming up on the sixth year, if I remember it correctly. The key thing to remember about Measure G is in year seven, you can begin to use the money. And there has been some discussion as part of your Citizen Athletic Fields Committee that that might be one use for those funds. Basically, it raises about $60,000 a year, and that's matched by the general fund. It's put into a restricted reserve.
So it's significantly less than approximately 300,000?
Oh, absolutely.
And then the second question is maybe for staff. Are you aware of other measures? I'm just saying that the last couple of years, maybe five or 10 years, we seem to see more and more ballot measures going out, asking the public to yet another, you know, fee or tax here and there. Are you aware of others in other areas? I know we're in San Carlos, we're going to be looking at South County Fire perhaps going out to the voters. Anything else that might be hitting the ballot at the same time?
There has been some discussion among some of the other cities about measures coming up, and obviously, the main one that we would have potentially would be the South County Fire, either the parcel tax or the Assessment District. There also was some discussion at the Parks and Rec Commission about having a revenue measure for fields in lieu of selling off some of the open space, and you'll probably hear more about that on the 27th. So that would be that. I should also mention, in the park and rec arena, there are some state bond funds that flow to us annually, plus there are some money that we can compete with. And I believe it's the Park and Rec Director's belief that on some of the proposals he has in his capital budget, that we might match some of the park and lo monies that we get with some state grant monies.
And then last follow-on question. I mean, I know we're not responsible for the school board, but did I, am I recalling correctly that the school board is also looking at floating something for additional funding?
They recently did pass a school bond in the last election with a 62% yes vote. The reason they were able to pass it at that level is the new state legislation lowered the threshold from 2/3 to 55% if there is a citizen oversight committee for the funds, and that's what they pursued.
So it doesn't look like they're going to be going back to the voters again?
That's our impression, yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
We are looking into other measures. We do want to make sure, one, that there's not going to be anything that would be competition enough that would cause us to lose, and we also really don't want to compete with other measures in the community. And we're hoping that actually, you know, that they will all work synergistically together.
Okay. Thank you again. This is not a public hearing, but we do have a speaker card for this item, Jack Hickey. Could you please state your city of residence and your name?
As I live in Emerald Hills, I'm Jack Hickey. I'm also a candidate for the Board of Supervisors, and I have experience in this particular area, having served on the Alternative Funding Committee of Park and Recreation in 1994. At that time, I wrote the Minority Report, and when I got on that committee, I was thinking of alternatives to taxation. Being a taxpayer's advocate all my life, I naturally was trying to get the committee to go in that direction. And there are other ways of financing park and recreation. Now, Julia mentioned that trying to get dedicated funds is extremely difficult. Well, I would point out that Mid Peninsula Regional Open Space District has dedicated funds. Right now, they collect $17 million from the cities of Belmont, San Carlos, Menlo Park, Redwood City, Woodside, and Portola Valley. And for your information, the election that created that annexation in the southern part of San Mateo County was rejected by the voters in San Carlos, Redwood City, Woodside, and Belmont. And it was only Portola Valley and Menlo Park that cast enough votes to bring us in. And I had proposed with the Alternative Funding Committee that we should consider a detachment of the Mid Peninsula Open Space District and turn those lands back over to Park and Recreation and use that $17 million, which would, just naturally should go to the entire county, because right now, the people in that district are paying $17 million, which is coming out of the 1% piece of the pie, the 1% tax. And so if we were to detach from Mid Peninsula, that money could go to the entire county, that $17 million, that's a pretty good hunk of change. The other alternatives that I proposed were revenue-producing uses of public land. And I, back, two years prior to my being on that committee, I made a proposal to the county, which was a GGNR Edgewood Park Outdoor Recreation Preserve. It was consistent with what was envisioned when this freeway was circuitously routed in the back end of San Carlos. We've got an extra half mile.
We do have a two-minute limit for public comment.
I would hope that you might give me a little bit extra.
I will ask you to do this. I'm sure all of us, and I know I am interested in what you have to present to us, could you put some things in writing and present it to us that way?
If I, I can give you a 10-minute presentation at a time in the future, if you would entertain that. I would love to do that. As a matter of fact, I was looking for some of the slides that I had, and I have a computer now, so I don't need to use the slides. I can bring my computer in and make a presentation if this board would entertain that.
We do have a policy of two minutes for public comment.
I understand that.
And we have a lot of material to get through this evening, so.
Right. I have, I just have one other comment.
If you could conclude your comments.
I would conclude it. I respect what the foundations do, but I do not respect the involvement of foundations in the political process. The, you know, when foundations get taxpayer money, like I'm on the Sequoia Healthcare District Board, they get tax money. They got $1 million from my district. That's property tax money. The College District spent $40,000 on the campaign to fund that bond.
I'm sorry, could you stay on track with this topic?
Yes, and I just want to say that while I respect the foundation, the Parks and Recreation Foundation, I do not respect their involvement in the political process to the extent where they are going around with these shows to promote a tax. I think they should stick to their, Shoemakers, stick to your last and collect the money and do good things for the park, but leave the political things up to the boards like this. And they don't need to make the presentations. Presentations should be made by committees that want to organize for that purpose, who pay, who do the filing of the political committees. They don't have a political committee. That's a foundation. They risk their tax exempt status.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you for hearing me. And you will let me know when I might be able to make a presentation. I'll send you something in writing.
Please do.
And we can work on that.
Please do. Speaker slips coming from everywhere. We haven't moved on to item seven yet, have we? Okay. Next item on the agenda is public comment, which is limited at this point in the meeting to 10 minutes total. We have two speaker slips. Each person is, please, limited to two minutes. And if your comments are about things that are not on the posted agenda, you're welcome to speak at this time. The first person is Hans Siemens.
My name is Hans Siemens. I own a business downtown Laurel Street. I live in San Carlos. Thank you, Mayor Grokot, and council members for listening to me. It's been brought to my attention by quite a few people that we are going to have another business, retail business called Starbucks in San Carlos on the 800 block. We have about 14 to 15 coffee retail businesses within Laurel Street of a three-block scenario. We don't need another coffee shop. We need to look at, what are we doing to downtown San Carlos? We put a moratorium on banks, we put a moratorium on beauty salons because there were too many getting there. What another coffee shop does is essentially dilute the customer base that we already have. We're only 28,000 people in the city, and not all 28 come downtown. I just want to make the city council aware of this, may make the staff aware of this, that we need to plan and take a look at what kind of businesses do we want on Laurel Street, and what kind of saturation point are we going to get into that actually puts smaller businesses out of business because they can't compete with somebody like Starbucks. And, you know, to have two Starbucks within two and a half blocks in downtown San Carlos just simply is ludicrous. Just doesn't make any sense. And I've had a lot of people come into my shop to tell me that, you know, you're going to get another business. I said, yeah, I know, that's okay. You know, I'll make my presentation. The other thing I would like to ask you, and I asked Liz Cullen already, to look into the permitting of building this Starbucks or outfitting the building. They've been working on it for over five weeks, and as of March 2nd, a permit had not been issued. I would like to see the staff look into that and to determine as to why some companies are allowed to do construction within the city when they don't have a permit, at least from my perspective. Thank you for your time. And if you could, put this on the future agenda to have people come in and talk whether they want a Starbucks downtown or not, it would be very nice to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Hans. Next speaker is Pat Bell, followed by John Hoffman, if you want to queue up.
Pat Bell, San Carlos. We, the citizens of San Carlos have been strictly limited to two minutes, and I object to someone coming in and making a campaign speech that runs much longer than two minutes. These long agendas with the hot-button issues at the end have a chilling effect on public input already, and then to have a long speech by someone in response to a report, I'm not allowed to do that. I don't think anybody else should either.
Thank you, Pat. Last speaker is John Hoffman.
John Hoffman, San Carlos. I simply want to say thank you very much to Bob Grisilli and to you, Matt, for turning the situation around at South County Fire. I was unable to make the last meeting and simply wanted to express that to you. I think you're on the right track, and I hope the rest of the council will move in the same direction. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comment. We'll now move on to item 8A, which is approval of the consent calendar. These items are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion unless anyone wishes to pull one of the items for separate discussion. Seeing a wave by the city manager. Yes, sir?
Through the chair, we would like to pull item J and have it continued to a later time.
Okay. So we will pull item J and continue that to another agenda. Thank you. Any other items?
Through the chair, I would like to, are you ready for motion?
Yes.
Assuming no one from the public wants to pull any items. Sorry. Move approval of consent calendar items 8A through C, 8D, which is an adoption of ordinance number 1369, modifying the San Carlos City Code Chapter 2.24, commissions. 8E, which is adoption of ordinance number 1370, amending the ordinance numbers 964, 1168, and 1330, and approving and adopting the Third Amendment to the redevelopment plan for the city of San Carlos redevelopment project area for the purpose of eliminating the time limit for establishing loans, advances, or indebtedness to carry out the redevelopment plan. Consent calendar items 8F, G, H, and I. Is that it?
Yes, it is.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, it's been moved by Inga Teagle-Doherty and seconded by Bob Grisilli. We'll call.
Councilmember Teagle-Doherty?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Grokot?
Yes.
And actually, through the chair, I would just like to commend parties in the Traffic and Transportation Commission on 8G, which is the stop signs at Cherry Street, Montgomery Street, and Hall Street. I know you guys have worked long and hard with the Loyal Association to get those in place, so thank you very much for those efforts.
Okay, we move on now to item 9A, which is a public hearing, consideration of abandoning a four-and-a-half-foot strip of public right-of-way on the east side of the 1300 block of Geneva Avenue. This is presented by Public Works Director Parveez Maktari.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have. This item.
Just for our new council members, so you know, this is a routine action that we can't do administratively. It has to come because it is a public hearing. We've asked this question many times. How, Parveez?
Yes.
I guess the only question I have is, it seemed to be it was for one individual who wants to add 250 square feet to his house?
Yes, that was the request, right.
So in effect, any homeowner could come and, to us, with the same action?
Correct.
Or same request?
Correct.
Okay.
But it has to be, it generally comes through Public Works, and Public Works would support that their, the abandonment makes sense, that the city's not going to use it.
No, I appreciate that.
And usually, we'd like to have the right-of-way be consistent, at least throughout every block, so we don't abandon the front of one house and a second or a third house, and the right-of-way is not consistent. And so we abandon the entire order for the entire block, because this piece of right-of-way is not needed for any future plan.
So this is for the entire block?
Yes.
Okay, fine. Thank you.
Okay, this is a public hearing. I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing. I do not see anybody from the public wishing to speak on this item.
I'll move.
Inga Teagle-Doherty has moved closing of the public hearing. Sergeant Tom has seconded. One favor.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Now we have a resolution. Would somebody like to move approval of the resolution?
I would move approval of resolution. Next in line? 2006-16. 2006-16, banning a four-and-a-half-strip of public right-of-way.
Second.
And Vice Mayor Tom Davis is seconded.
We'll call.
Councilmember Teagle-Doherty?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Grokot?
Yes. Okay, that brings us to the second public hearing for the evening, which is consideration of amending the city's cost of services schedule user fees. Richard Evert, Finance Director.
Mayor, members of the council, we try to update the user fees annually, and in this case, we're about a year and a half to two years out on the latest updates for the various fees. And I just, without going through the report, because it is quite lengthy and there are hundreds of fees here, I just want to give you some highlights of how we develop the fees and some significant outcomes. The, there are two approaches that we've used. First is a cost allocation plan that determines the departmental overhead. That's basically the ratio of the non-personnel cost to the personnel cost. And then we do a central services overhead, which is basically allocating the, what we call central services, or the support-type department activities, allocating that out to the primary providers of those services. That would be, support, the central support would be HR, finance, city clerk, city managers' office, the city council, and the, most of the direct service, services are provided by police department, planning department, the public works department, Parks and Rec department. The cost of services was, we calculated the full cost, so we would know what the ultimate or the maximum that we could recover. We compared the current fee against the full cost, and then staff proposed a number of fee changes. of fee changes. As you will note, that some of the fees went up, about half of the fees went up. The other half either stayed the same or went down. The average increase is a little under 4% and the impact on the general fund is about 4 tenths of 1%. The fluctuation was based on both these overhead factors that I talked about, labor cost changes, benefit changes, and review of how each fee is, how each service is performed. So where there are opportunities to streamline operations, we've taken those opportunities and some fees you will see have gone down quite a bit. The two new fees that I want to bring your attention to, one is a surcharge for the general plan update. We've estimated the general plan update to cost approximately $200,000. It is permissible by law to recover that or amortize that over a five-year period. We've attempted to do that with spreading the cost, approximately $40,000, over all the fees in planning and many of the fees in the building departments. And then the other new fee is a photovoltaic fee. That's for doing the building inspection process, electrical inspections for photovoltaic operation, photovoltaic development or implementation. You'll note in the fee schedule that the cost for staff to provide that service is more than double the $300 amount, but we felt staff was recommending that because of the public benefit of increasing photovoltaic generation, that it was, like some other fees, worth subsidizing and incentivizing people to add photovoltaic generation capacity to their residential businesses. That concludes my presentation. Be happy to answer any of your questions. Also, some of the department heads who are most affected, as well as staff who helped prepare this report, are available to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you. Why don't we start with questions down here with Brad and move this direction? If that's all right with everybody?
Actually...
Are you ready?
Yeah, not. Can you go the other way? I just am trying to find my notes.
Actually, quick questions. Thanks for the presentation. Actually, I think mine are more specific to department heads. Is Jack here? I appreciate staff taking the time to do this and actually putting in place there's a actual cost, of estimated cost of putting these service or these fees together for the public's benefit. I know that in the past, we're not allowed as a city to charge more, so we can't make money on these fees, but we certainly have the ability to charge less than the actual cost of providing the service, if it makes sense. And I'm a huge proponent of if it's prohibitive to actually charge a fee, people generally are going to do it without getting the necessary permits and then we run into life and safety issues. My questions actually have to do with, I noticed in a couple of areas, the fees have gone up pretty significantly. One, dirt hauling has gone up from $1.60 a cubic yard to $10 a cubic yard.
Excuse me, Inga, for everyone's sake, when you ask a question on something, would you mind?
Yeah, sorry, page three. Bottom of page three. And then the other, the other one actually has to do with the debris box permit, went up from $36 to $193, and I know a debris box only costs a couple of hundred dollars generally to actually get the debris box. So perhaps you can answer why those two have gone up so significantly?
I get to defer to Parveez.
Oh, oh, okay. Both of those are Parveez, huh? Sorry?
Yes, both of those probably were. Dirt haul, actually, the dirt hauling, the trucks damaged the pavement and the community financial estimated that how much each truck load will damage the roads. And as you know, the cost of repairing the roads, when it was $1.60 per yard, that was calculated approximately, if I remember, eight or nine years ago and at the time we were paying, for example, a patch of four inches, about $1.50 per square foot. Now we're paying very close to $6. So it's, that's all related to cost of road repair, that the trucks will damage the road.
So for an average, well, and I know there's probably no average, where we would see this really becoming an impact is up in any kind of hillside development. Is that correct?
We have seen developments that have over 1,000 yards, but there are residential units, single-family homes, in range of 100 yards, 50 yards, 200, but major projects like 1,000 El comunino project is over 1,000 yards.
And then, but for swimming pools, for example, we've, even though a swimming pool might have, I don't know how many hundreds of yards, we've actually reduced the fee on that significantly. Is that correct?
Right. That swimming pools, dirt haul does not apply to swimming pool. That's a separate building department fee, which I'm not familiar with that. Dirt hauling basically is the, in the public works, any area, what we deal with is over 100 yards of dirt hauling, more than 250 yards of total grading. So if something like swimming pool, actually building department, building official will decide on that.
Okay, and then perhaps, can you speak to the debris box permit?
The debris box permit is, when people request they want to put a debris box on the street, if they put it under their own driveway, there is no cost. We don't even get involved. But when they want to put it on the street, staff has to go out there, look at the street, location they want to put it in. Sometimes the streets are too narrow and they have to determine what kind of traffic control the people should provide and how many days. Sometimes people put it too close to driveways, which then creates a problem for the neighbors. So it's just the staff time going out there, doing the inspection before they issue the permit and after it's placed, they go out there and check it. So that's just the staff time.
But in actual common practice, I mean, the average homeowner can call up Allied and say, "I want a debris box," and they'll pop it wherever the homeowner tells them to pop it. Is that true?
Without the city permit, they will not.
And is that applied to debris boxes of a certain size or larger? Or is it just any debris box?
When they call Allied Ways to get debris box, they will ask them to have a city permit and usually these debris boxes, some of them create traffic problems.
No, I understand. I mean, not all debris boxes are created equal. They don't...
The small ones, actually, they put them on their driveways usually. These are the larger ones that they want to put it on the street. So I know the fee looks, appears to be high and of course, city councils can reduce that. This is based on, many financial calculating the fees based on the staff time.
No, I appreciate that. And then I had one other question. It's actually also on page four. I noticed there's a building and plan check, or a building, planning and building department plan check fee that's gone up from $138 to $710. Item F, close to the top of the page, and yet, on page two, no, I'm sorry, page one, there's also a building permit with a plan check as 75% and that's based on actually evaluation. So can you...
The first item that you mentioned is under engineering fees?
I believe so, yes.
Yes. And that's when the planning department and building department, there are items, things on the plan, plans of a development or anything that is there that engineering has to decide because they're, for example, modifying the right-of-way, the water consumption is going to go up and they want us to review the plans because there are engineering issues or public works issues in there. And that's again, based on the time the staff spends on reviewing of these plans, returning back to planning department or building department. So we just indicate in our memo to the departments that this is our fee, engineering fee.
And would that apply to, for example, this abandonment of this easement that we just considered? Obviously, it has a public works review of that. Would that, the same fee apply to that?
No. Actually, abandoned fee is a separate line item under engineering and that is going up as well because that is really very involved. You see the final product, but going through and finding out what utilities are there and what does it affect? Does it affect other properties? And do we have any utilities that is very time-consuming? By the time it comes to you, that's the final product, it is very time-consuming. So as you can see, it's a separate item where they just go into $1,500 and some...
Yeah, $1,502 up from $65 an hour and that's based on an average of the time that it takes.
Yes, the city staff spends time on it.
And then the other one that I seem to recall from a couple of years back that I'm not finding in all of these was the, we had a separate line item actually for window replacement. And maybe this is Jack. I seem to remember a couple of years ago, when this came before us, there was an actual cost of window replacement and from my standpoint, I think it's probably a good idea to be more energy-conscious and to encourage residents to replace their windows. And the cost at that time was based on actual cost to look at the plans and everything else. Is that in here separate or is that just...
It's not separate at all. It's under the valuation portion of the building permits. Most of those come in under $10,000, so you're looking at the one or the first or second category.
Okay, so $150. It's still down about 85%?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Ed, I'm going to jump in here if I might because I want to follow up on some questions that Inga asked and then, of course, open it up back to the, to the council. So Parveez, if you could jump back up there again.
Yes.
Thank you. Inga had asked about the, this is under engineering, so it's on page four, for planning and building department plan check. One thing that's occurring now is a lot of remodels are now being classified as new homes. And when that's done, folks have to put in fire sprinklers and that costs money. And then when that's done, they have to do a sewer lateral and that costs money. So that seems to me, what you said about increase in water use, anything that's going to affect public works, well, if it's going to affect, like for instance, if you have to put in a sprinkler system, then you have to check the water line and the use and everything. And I just want to make sure, I see you wagging your head no.
Yeah, no.
So those kinds of things wouldn't necessarily then cause this fee to, the trigger to be pulled on this fee?
Correct. I should have mentioned that the water consumption is to be added only to commercial and industrial uses. For example, we take a bank and turn it into a restaurant, it comes to us, so we should estimate how much capacity they need for connection to the sewer. It does not apply to residential and actually remodeling and some additions don't even come to engineering.
Okay. And then the other question I had to follow up on a topic Inga was questioning is item 10, the debris boxes. Now, in some cases, those get put in and they have those really heavy steel wheels on the bottom of them and then when they get taken away, they scar the pavement. What happens? Who pays for repairing the pavement?
That's a good point, actually. In this case, Allied Ways should pay for it, but we haven't been charging them in that. And if you want to do that, it's going to be a longer discussion, how we do that, do we, do they post a bond? Should it be part of the fees? So this, you're absolutely right. That's a good question.
So you're going to take notes on that and come back to us on something, right?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. All right. Again, opening it up to questions for the rest of the council.
A question regarding the solar fee again. Can you tell us how this compares to the other cities? Which one? I'm sorry. The $300 solar fee? Oh, that's, I didn't see a comparison, a city comparison on the attached list.
Actually, the permits that we issued last year, last calendar year, 2005, averaged out to close to, in the neighborhood of $600 per permit. So establishing a $300 flat fee permit is totally up to council to make that decision.
But you don't know what other cities are charging? Menlo, Embar...
There are, I don't know exactly which cities are charging the flat fee, but it's under, I'm under the impression that there are several.
Yeah, I heard that as well. The other question I have is on the banner. This is on item 12 on page four. The community banner, I guess it's for profit only. I presume we hang the nonprofit banners free. It goes from $60 to $325. And I've seen those banners hung and they hang in pretty quick. And I'm just curious about the actual cost of doing that. Is that really what we're looking at here?
That's the actual cost because it takes two people, whether from general services, public works usually, people to go out there, they're in the truck, they have to get away from what they were doing and go there and hang these banners and then another time they have to go and take them down. So it's all based on the actual cost.
Okay. And the nonprofit banners then are hung free? So far, they have been, yes. Yeah, okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Questions?
Just to follow up on the photovoltaic, I have the same problem you have. Fee is, what exactly, it's just a flat fee to install? In other words, what cost do we actually incur? Do we just plan check the...
We actually plan check the actual installation, the details that they bring into our office and we actually obviously do the inspection for the, for the installation.
And how many of those are we doing right now?
We did 12 last year.
12. Is that increasing at all over the past, say, five years?
Yes, it is. I actually did a short report, which never got to council, but we, I think it's like three, six, and 12, almost identically. It doubled incrementally each year.
Great, thank you.
Jack, I have a follow-up question to that.
Right ahead.
Can you tell us a little bit about how that program works with the solar panels? Because it's my understanding that when folks install those, there's some kind of incentive program that PG&E offers. Is that correct?
They do offer it. I am not aware of the actual details of that program.
Oh, that's, okay. How about also related, same question, when folks install new windows? Any program there?
I'm not aware of any at all for, for the windows. It's mandated by code as of last October '05. So when, when folks do change out windows, even though the vast majority are already double-pane windows, they're mandated now when you just change windows out.
Say that again?
If folks in, prior to October '05 decided they wanted to change windows, majority of them changing off to double-pane anyway, but after October '05, it was mandated by the state of California, when you do change out windows, they must be double-pane.
Okay, yeah, there's hardly anything else available, I don't think.
There are, but again, there's, there's a few folks that still do it.
Put in single-pane?
They put in singles.
That's amazing.
Insane, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
I actually have another question for Jack, I'm sorry. I thought you were going to get off easy.
You wore your nighties, right?
And this one's actually a little bit more philosophical than anything. I noticed plan check fees.
Yes.
I've been on council now for four years and I consistently hear issues about plan check. And we outsource that, correct? Do we have a in-house plan checker?
Oh, absolutely. We have a plan check engineer for many years.
And do we, if that burden becomes too great, we have, you know, I would imagine every year we've had more and more, do we outsource the overflow? Do we say we've got X amount of hours of plan check available with this one individual and then anything above and beyond that gets outsourced to an outside agency or an outside plan checker?
Exactly that. We've already had to start outsourcing and this is only March and they've started going back to our consultant, starting the first of March, actually.
And I noticed that in almost every single case, everything above valuation of $50,000 and up, our actual percent, estimated percent of cost recovery exceeds 100%.
That's, that's exactly correct.
And is that to take into consideration the additional cost of an outside plan checker?
No, actually, it's, it's, it's trying to encourage folks who don't normally get permits to get their permits. If we were to use full-blown costs for those, those categories of valuation, folks who take out window permits, for instance, would be charged an incredible amount to have those windows inspected because they are based on valuation.
Ben, I think the staff report is incorrect with those percentages because, for example, for a million dollars and up, our proposed fee is $4,500 and our full cost, it says here, is $2,600. So we're charging almost 200% of actual cost?
I'll have to use the same words that Mr. Maktari did. That is what the valuation came up through the consultants.
So we actually, as a, as a council, could suggest that instead of the fee being $4,500, it should be down at $2,600?
That is up to council's decision, yes.
A following question is, is there any recourse? I mean, do we make any commitments in terms of plan check turnaround times?
Yes, you asked that several months ago and as the first of the year, we start a plan, guaranteed plan check turnaround, which is on our website and we have it in paper form also.
So do we, actually, maybe this is a city attorney question, do we... So do we, actually, maybe this is a city attorney question, do we have the ability as a council to offer up a rebate if we're late?
You could. Might be difficult to implement, but we, you can.
Yeah. Jack, I just, I have a hard time, what you told me is that you said that you're actually charging people less to get them, to encourage them to get permits. And yet, I know everyone has to get a permit, because you guys do such a good job driving around San Carlos and spotting everybody that's doing any work. And yet, we're charging them more than it's actually costing the city.
Well, from our point of view, we're, again, we're trying to encourage the smaller projects to come in, and they are offset by the larger projects, as far as percentage of cost to do the job. And if you look at our budget at any year, you'll find out it balances out at the end of the year. We don't take in any more than we spend.
So we're basically robbing from the rich to pay for the poor?
You could say that.
All right. Well, I'll leave that open as a discussion point for this council. But thank you for answering those questions.
Okay. Richard?
If I might add on to the last comment, we have tried to look, as Jack said, we tried to look at the full cost of the operation and allocate those costs based on the project size and the complexity. Where we show a difference in the cost that we recover versus the cost to do the job, it's more than likely the small job that will not do the permit, will not go through the permitting process. We want to encourage them to do that, so that they do get the inspection that they need. But if they have a small job, they're more inclined than the bigger project. They have much less visibility than the bigger project. So we want to induce them, best we can, to get the inspections that they need, rather than do it without inspections at all. So like, in the past years, we've had the water heater cost for inspecting a water heater replacement was higher than what we were recommending to the council be adopted as a fee. Because we really want those people that replace their water heater to not be discouraged by a fee. We've brought that cost down, and so that's not an issue anymore. But it's the same principle, that we try to encourage, for public safety purposes, those that might otherwise not be complying with some of our permitting requirements.
But it seems to me, actually, if I look at this, I mean, we've got, there's two components to this fee. There's a permit component, which, in almost every single case, is significantly less than the cost. And then, there is the plan check, which is significantly higher. And if you, I mean, you can't have one without the other, I would imagine. If you add those two together, they're actually about 100% of the cost. So is there a reason behind the cost allocation, then? That it's higher for plan check than the actual cost, but that the actual cost of the permit is lower?
There's no rhyme or reason, other than the plan check is mandated by municipal code. It's 75% of the plant, of the building permit cost, which was raised by a council about six or seven years ago, from the previous 65%.
But it's 75, oh, so what we're doing is essentially rebating them on the permit side then?
Yes. If you look at the two together, almost up and down the sheet here, you'll find out, if you add the two together, you're going to end up with about 100%.
So rather than correct the actual, whatever it is, the ordinance that was passed with the 75%?
We could actually alter these, so that they almost all come out to 100%. It'll be about the same, but we'll have to change the 75% portion in the ordinance.
Okay. All right.
Jack, stay there, please. Inga keeps asking questions, it makes me ask questions.
Sorry.
It's okay. I'm just curious about a couple of things. One, on some of these smaller projects, like if you have a building permit that you're, you know, a valuation of a dollar to 2,000, how, like a water heater, for instance, there's no plan check involved in that, is there?
No, water heaters are under plumbing permits, and they're flat fees. There's no plan check.
So there is no plan check? That would apply. And I would imagine, on some of these dollar valuations, you get under a certain dollar valuation, there probably is no plan check.
There's always a plan check, because we have to prepare the permit and get it out the door based on something.
But aren't there other projects like water heaters that don't require a plan check?
Yes. And there's no plan check charge.
Okay. So that's what I'm saying, is that things that are under $2,000, there's probably even projects that come in, you know, I don't know, $8,000 that could be.
Keep in mind, these are only building permit, which are based on valuation. The other permits that we're talking about, all the electrical permits, service changes, water heaters, furnaces, these are all flat fee permits. There's no plan check involved.
And my other question, so that we don't have to ask it during discussion, because I think we're probably going to drill on this a little bit during our discussion. And, you know, Inga's rightly pointed out that this stuff gets upside down once you get up to a certain valuation. In other words, you're paying more than the actual cost of, what the full cost is here. But what do you think would happen? And this is either for you or for Richard, I suppose, could answer this question. These fees that are, the current fee is 68, we're talking about going up to 71, kind of the first four fees, until we get to the 400 level.
Sorry, Matt, could you reference page?
Yeah. I'm sorry, I'm on page one, very top of the page. Okay? And so if you look at the first four fees, they're 71, 53, 86, 64. Could those, and none of them are bringing in the full cost. If those were all just made a, I'm sorry, a $100 flat fee, how much would that, do you think, impact your income, one way or the other?
I would say not much at all.
Not much at all?
No.
Okay.
Matt, I see where you're going with this. The issue, though, is that because of the ordinance, the plan check is required to be 75% of the permit fee, and the permit fee is based on valuation. So what they've done is the 75%, unless we decide to ask staff to go back and come back with a recommendation to change that ordinance, this is kind of a workaround. I see that staff's trying to make it equitable to the public, and it just, it looks skewed when you're looking at it, but if you start adding up the numbers, they come out pretty much awash. And I think because of our hands, or staff's hands are tied because of the 75% of permit fee ordinance that's been passed, they've chosen, I think, a relatively creative way to make it equitable to the public, because you can't do, you can't do one without the other. They always go together. You always have a plan check and then a permit.
That's correct.
Unless the applicant decides to go through plan check, and at the end of the day, has no money left to buy the permit. So, but, you know, I think if they're going to commit to, you know, a million-dollar improvement, they've got the money for the permit fee and the plan check fee. So I know where you're going with this. I had the same concern. If I took them out of context in just one line item, just plan check, for example, without looking at the associated building permit fee that goes along with that line item, then it looks like it's out of whack, it's skewed. But I think Jack's answered the question that I had, which is, you know, how does, how do we make sure that this is maintaining some, you know, equality or equitable solution for the public? And I got my answer on that one.
Okay. I think we've asked all the questions we're going to ask.
Thank you.
We can sit down and chill out for a while. Thank you. Okay. We do have some public comment I want to go to next on this item, and I'm going to reiterate, if you could keep your comments to two minutes or less, we would greatly appreciate that. First is Kurt Newick, followed by Bonnie McClure.
Hello, I'm working on the solar permit. I've been going up and down the Bay Area, and I help participate in Sierra Club. Kurt Newick, Campbell, California, Loom Pritta chapter. We did a study, you were wondering where San Carlos fits, they're kind of in the bottom, bottom-ish of the permit fees at $922 for a solar electric permit. But that's history. If you guys can adopt this $300 flat fee, that will encourage solar installations, it will encourage large solar installations locally. What we found, I've talked to many head building officials in head meetings, a lot of meetings, and I presented to the building inspectors and all those guys on this study that we did with the Sierra Club on solar permit fees. And it takes two to five hours of staff time normally to permit a professionally mounted solar electric system. So the $300 is what the study concluded from the Sierra Club of what a ceiling should be. And I'm just, it's so wonderful to be able to promote solar, we're children of the sun. And if we don't promote the solar energy, we're in big trouble. So I think it's great, and I support it. The flat fee is the way to go. It encourages larger installations, just like putting in a water heater becomes a normal thing, rather than having to plan check. And based on the valuation, the solar panels are very expensive. And so, as you get these big systems, the permit fee can get very pricey. And I know people that have decided not to put it in because of the permit fees.
Thank you very much. Bonnie McClure. Followed by John Hoffman.
Bonnie McClure, San Carlos, I just want to thank you and congratulate you. I've been looking at plans in EDCC for over three years, and we've only had one greenhouse come through for approval with solar panels. And I think this will help to encourage people to go that way. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. John Hoffman, followed by Pat Bell.
I think that the council needs to keep in mind that people pay taxes on property, and sales tax income are designed to fund city services. I'm aware that that revenue has not kept pace with costs, but I think when you are taking a look at fee structures, particularly if you are asking a consultant, the consultant knows where his bread is buttered, and he is always going to come back with a, with an increase in the fees, I think sometimes not reasonably justified. By making comparisons with other cities, there tends to be a ratcheting process where nobody wants to be below the median, or nobody wants to be below the average. And of course, mathematically, that's not possible. So I simply would ask you to keep in mind that citizens are paying these fees in addition to the other things for which they pay. Final comment on green building, I think it would be highly desirable if there were no requirement for a fee in order to encourage green building, and this would not be confined only to solar or photovoltaic. I think that if you are serious about wanting to promote green building, this is one very good way for you to do it. I have a friend who put in a photovolta, you know what I mean?
Solar.
System. And he said that the fee in San Carlos was more than twice what the fee would be for the same thing in Belmont. He didn't check a lot of cities, he just checked Belmont. I think it would be a great idea if there were no fee. Thank you.
Thank you. Pat Bell.
Pat Bell, San Carlos, I also am happy to see this encouraging of solar panels. One other comment and one question. It's difficult for the public to follow a public hearing when we don't have the list that you have, when you're saying, I'm on page four, the middle of the page, I have no idea what you're looking at. So if we could have that kind of information when we come to a public hearing, it'd be easier to follow. And my question is, what the heck are we paying this guy who goes out to see if the, if the debris box is going to fit on the street, and then goes out to see if it did fit on the street? And how much are we paying the guys who hang the banners? $325 to get in a bucket truck, go up, hang the banner, get down, go back a week later, and take it down, seems like a lot of money to me. I want to know what their salaries are, and maybe I'll apply as an assistant sign hanger or something.
Thank you, Pat. Okay. We don't have anybody else from the public. This is a public hearing.
I would move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We can now discuss it amongst ourselves.
I had a question of perhaps staff. When was, maybe it was said tonight, but I got lost in all the numbers. When was the last time that we did this? I'm sorry. Richard?
We did it in three parts, in, all in 2004, February, I believe it was October and August of that year.
So it's almost, almost two years, or in some parts, two years?
Two years and one half, in others.
And we're saying it's an average price increase of 4%? And then, the first line, the first bullet point there, as I'm a little confused, it's 0.4%? So is that 0.4%? Or is it 4% on the first bullet point, too?
0.4% of the general fund.
Of the general fund?
Right. And 4% for the fees themselves.
So, because I tried to figure out what the, what the fees were before, and I couldn't quite figure it out.
The, the 4% represents $70,000, is 4% of the general fund revenues.
All general fund revenues, or just for these fees?
All general fund revenues, correct.
Okay. Just trying to figure it out, because I couldn't, so, okay. That's why that 0.4% just threw me off.
Okay. Discussion.
Well, I guess I'll start. I want to actually thank staff for doing a really good job of actually giving us some full cost ideas around here with some of these. It really helps out a lot. I was actually quite encouraged to notice that in a lot of areas, actually, the base percentage went down overall. And I don't know, I didn't go through and count how many, how many of the fees went up versus how many went down, but.
75, right there. Sure.
It just seemed to me that it was a lot of them going down by a much more significant amount than those that were going up. I did have concerns about the fee for this debris box, Parvish, I understand what you're saying about actual cost. It just seems to me that $193 seems a bit excessive, and so I would encourage my fellow council members to perhaps, so, meet someplace in the middle, and maybe make it a flat fee of $95 or $100 or something like that. I do also understand about the dirt hauling fees. And perhaps that is more of an exception rather than the norm, since there doesn't seem to be that many more lots in the hills that are going to be doing this. I mean, my whole thought process around these fees, and perhaps I'll answer the gentleman that spoke, is that, yes, citizens of San Carlos do pay taxes, and we try to make sure that those who receive benefits specific to some project that they're working on, they pay their fair share of those, and that we don't actually ask the entire population of San Carlos to bear the burden for someone's remodel that's going up next door. So that's why we do pass along some of these fees that are very specific to individual projects that would benefit either an individual or a family. And so, other than that, I don't really have any other major concerns with any of these, any of the fees that are as proposed.
Okay. Anybody else?
I'd like to chat a little bit about the solar fee. I understand that we're sort of rock bottom, but I'm really wondering, following on John's comment, whether we should be rock, rock bottom. It seems to me it sort of fits into what the city is all about. It fits into our sustainability concept and the committee that we formed. We don't do very many of them. I read an article recently where the payback is almost impossible. And you do it because it's right, and you do it because it perhaps fits your, your need to do something about the energy. But it's a, it's a real problem to encourage this to happen, when the bottom line is almost, well, just isn't there, from what I understand. So if we gave it away free, and if we didn't charge for it, we'd be doing our part to help people get the, get the programs going. And I think it might be a good move for us. It doesn't have to be free forever, and hopefully someday, it, the technology will come down to a price where people, the ordinary people are, can afford it and willing to pay for it. But in the meantime, I think it says the right thing, and it is the right thing. I would suggest we waive the fee.
I would just follow up, Councilmember David's, excuse me, Vice Mayor David's comments.
I would just follow up Councilmember David's, excuse me, Vice Mayor David's comments. In that regard, I think we need to do what we can to incent solar. And it certainly is not going to be a major loss of revenue. I mean, if we've done three, six, and 12 over the last three years, and we review fees every year and a half to two years as it is, if there was going to be a run on the photovoltaic bank, we certainly would have time to respond. And it'd be great if we had that. Honestly, I think we should do what we can to encourage it. So I would concur that we should rock bottom that one if we could. It's the right thing to do. Also, in response to Councilmember Teagueal Doherty's debris box flat fee, it seems right. Seems like a lot of the projects, big or small, require those. So I think maybe $95 flat fee or something like that seems like a good idea to me as well.
I don't really, you know, all the questions that were asked were my questions. So everyone brought up the points that I had talked about. I'm certainly amenable to adjusting the debris box or the photovoltaic solar fee if that's the consensus of the council. I think everyone should understand if a price increase is 4% and it's basically every two years, that's basically 2% a year. So it's not exactly that we're trying to break the bank here. So I think it's a reasonable increase on most of these. And as is shown, half are going up and half are going down.
Okay. So what I'm hearing from the council is that we accept the fee structure as it has been presented to us with two changes. One would be to charge zero for the photovoltaic solar fees and changing the debris box to a flat fee of $100 or $95 or something in that area. Is that correct? You had stated 95. Do you want to stick with that number?
I don't know, $99 and 99 cents? No, I just, I picked a number out of hat. You know, I think--
Brad said 95, so.
Well, I did say 95.
Oh, you did?
I did. Because $100 seems to me too much, but 95 is, all right, I'll bite the bullet and pay the 95 bucks.
With the understanding that Parvise is going to work on that bonding issue.
Yeah.
That is a problem. It does. They do tariff.
Yeah. And you know, I could certainly support Tom's suggestion about waiving that. I would like to see, though--
The solar fee?
Yeah, for the photovoltaic solar fee. I would love to see Jack come back, though, if it does seem to be an undue burden on staff, or, which would be a good thing, actually, just to get a report back so that we can actually see if indeed something like removing or waiving the fees on some of these things may actually encourage more applications and we can actually hopefully drive some behavior that way. I'd love to see almost the same thing with double-pane windows and, you know, some other things that are really in the best interest of more green buildings around here.
Sorry, I have a clarification I would like to get from Jack on the photovoltaic because sometimes what's going on when people put those in is they're also re-roofing at the same time. So we would still be charging a fee for a typical re-roofing permit fee or whatever, correct?
That's correct. And about half of them change the roof out before they put the panels up. Some roofs are in great shape. A lot of the comp roofs out there last 25, 30 years. And I think they'll outlast some of the photo panels.
Okay. So we are not waiving, just so everyone understands, we're not waiving fees that have to do with the roof itself, but just the panels.
And that's for new installations only? Or, because I know sometimes, like in my case, I actually had to take them out. Does that apply both? I guess I'll ask that question. Or is it just for new installations?
I'm sorry, would you rephrase that?
Yeah, for new photovoltaic projects?
Yes.
That's what we're talking about?
Yes.
Not the removal of photovoltaic solar projects?
Yes.
Okay.
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 Very good.
So with that, I'll move--
Okay, there we go. Yeah, that's what I was looking for next.
Looking for a motion. Absolutely. We'll move this thing right along here. I will move the adopted, or Resolution Number 2006-17--
Yes.
--that relates to revisions to the current cost of services fee schedule per Exhibits A and B with the two changes that we discussed. One, which is the waiving of the fees for photovoltaic solar fees, and the other is to lower the cost of the debris box permit on page four, item 10, to $95.
I'll second.
Flat fee.
Okay. It's been motion by Inga Teagueal Doherty, second by Vice Mayor David's. Roll call.
Councilmember Inga Teagueal Doherty?
Yes.
Councilmember David?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Grokot?
Yes. Okay. That completes our public hearings. We are on to item 10A, consideration of contracts for finance director, planning, public works, city engineer, city attorney, and proposal to combine planning, building, and housing functions into a reformatted community development department. And I see our city manager, Mark Weiss.
Honorable mayor, members of the city council. At the last city council meeting, I presented the staff report here that outlined some of the logic and philosophy behind the recommendations that are being presented here within this report. The issue of contracting has been before this city council now for some period of time, and the plan that is before you would have us renegotiating contracts with Moktari Engineering and Neil Martin Associates for public works, engineering, and planning functions. But it also would outline a plan for transition. First of all, within the community development arena, the plan would be for us to fill a community development director position that is currently in place. It's currently funded. It is not filled. The proposal would have us change the nature of that position, however, from being a position geared towards economic development and moving it towards a true community development type of function. That would be broader-based, that would include housing, building, and planning functions. And so it would be a city employee that would be retained with planning background that would be funded partially from the existing revenue stream that is intended for that position, but also partially from the contract amount that has been set aside for Neil Martin and Associates because we would have a planner, a principal planner, in that position that could provide some guidance and carry out some of the duties him or herself. With respect to the public works and engineering function, we're recommending that during the next budget cycle that we consider the creation of an assistant public works director/ city engineer. That would be somebody that, if successful, might attain the position of public works director, city engineer in time. Mr. Moktari has indicated to date that he would no longer be available to the city of San Carlos. We think that we ought to take good advantage of his services while he is offering to provide them, while at the same time preparing for, planning for, a succession that would leave the city well-prepared in order to carry on in the public works and city engineering arena well into the future. That's the nuts and bolts of what is contained within the staff report. Certainly, there have been other issues since the last two weeks when this has been brought forward that have come to my attention with regard to other issues that perhaps are not thoroughly discussed within this report relating to the philosophy of contracting. I didn't get into that in much detail within this report. We have pointed out that many cities do it in different ways. And in some cases, we know that contracts are retained. In some cases, we know employees are retained. In other cases, we have contract employees, such as your city manager. So there are different ways to provide basic municipal services. We, certainly I do not feel that there is necessarily one best way to provide those services in all scenarios. And I think as financial conditions warrant, as challenges, and as the expertise is identified within each organization, that there's an opportunity to determine which is the best scenario, which is the best approach for you in a particular time. It's called contingency theory within the management philosophy or theory realm. And sometimes, if you want to get into a more detailed discussion of that, that actually was the nature of my master's final paper. So we want to talk about management theory and philosophy. I'm prepared to go there. I actually settled, though, as a contingency theorist. And that basically concludes that it is contingent upon the people that are being managed, the situation, and the resources that are available to you. And I think in this particular case, we've taken into account the resources that you have, both in terms of revenue streams as well as the personnel. And we've outlined a plan for you that I think will provide you with good service over the next short term, as well as a plan for carrying on well into the future. With that, I would be open to any questions that the council might have.
Okay. Thank you, Mark. Questions?
The proposal for community development director position, is that then a direct report to city manager?
Yes.
Okay. And he would work, he or she, excuse me, thank you, Bo, would work in concert with economic development director? Is that, how does it, can you just describe how those two things dovetail for me?
As I'm currently proposing, I would separate the economic development function from community development. And I do that for a couple of reasons, or I recommend that for a couple of reasons. Number one, I'm suggesting that the economic development function come directly into the city manager's office. And we have an economic development and housing director. And I'm suggesting that the housing function within that position be located to the community development department and that the economic development function come into the manager's arena. I think that that creates a nice split in that I think you want your economic development director, I think you want your economic development function to be a proponent of economic development. I think it can be housed within a community development arena, but it does put a bit of a conflict within the community development director's responsibility and that that person is having a responsibility for promoting economic development on the one hand, while on the other hand is charged with reviewing and ensuring that the community's interests in terms of protections from that development are being monitored on the other. And so I'm proposing that those two functions be split, that community development be more of a pure planning, building, and housing function, and that economic development be housed within the city manager's arena.
And would you also please describe the, it says including supervision of the Neil Martin Associates contract, that'd be under the community development director?
Yes.
And so does that mean, is that, I guess I'm just curious about the, is that the management of the contract or also management of the people? Is that now--
As it's currently structured, it would be the management of the contract. Neil Martin and Associates has been providing planning services virtually your entire planning department for 20-plus years. I mean, it's in the report. And I think, you know, there were other things that played into the overall recommendation. I mean, I talked about the particular circumstances that face this city at this point in time and the resources that you have available to you. You have a recently resigned finance director, a recently resigned human resources director, a reorganization in administration, a reorganization within community development is being proposed here. You've got longstanding planning staff. You've got major projects before you, such as DePalo Alto Medical Foundation. You've got longstanding public works and city engineering expertise. I think there's enough change for the time being. I would strongly recommend that you keep the existing team intact to the degree that the existing team is interested and willing to continue working with us so that we can put a transition plan in place that takes you where I think you may all want to be three, five, 10 years into the future. I don't know if that answered your question or not.
It does. Also, within the report, your suggestion is that we ultimately work toward an employee-based public works director position. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. The only other, well, not the only other thing, but another, and I guess this depends on the scope of the discussion we want to have tonight, but I know in some of the, are there, I believe there's not always yearly performance evaluations going on for all of our contract employees. I know they're not in the contracts. Is that practices that we use in the city or that you use?
Well, I think that within this city, there's, you know, there's daily oversight of the contract. I mean, currently, all of the invoices are being given to the assistant city manager who reviews them, and then they go to finance for review there as well. Certainly, there's managerial oversight on a routine, daily, weekly, bi-weekly basis. In terms of a formal evaluation, I don't believe that those contract directors, CEOs, are necessarily reviewed in the formal personnel evaluation format that other employees are reviewed. I would recommend to you that there could be, there should be, I think, some kind of formal review of that nature. I think it should be conducted by either the city manager or by the other personnel, the community development director for planning, for example, in the scope of their duties. I think that that kind of review is appropriate. I think it ought to be conducted at the staff level. I do think that every three to five years, the city council ought to consider whether or not they want to do an RFP, a request for proposals, or a request for qualifications. I don't think you ought to automatically do that. I think that you ought to consider doing it, and certainly if you're unhappy with the services or if you want to change in direction or philosophy, you have that opportunity. I wouldn't recommend that you do an RFQ, though, now, nor would I recommend that you do it routinely because I think what you may end up with are changes that you may not want and that may not be in the best interest of the city in the review and in the context of the current projects or other projects at that point in time that are before you.
Right. And to me, yearly performance evaluations are essential. That's the reason I bring it up. So I agree with you on that. Thank you.
Okay.
Mark, just to reaffirm, I think the direction this hall goes, that as we go on in the next couple of years, we'll end up with department managers who are employees.
That is correct.
And that is a determined result of all this.
That is correct. However, I'm not proposing anything in here that would preclude you from hiring contractors in the future, should you choose to do so. I think you should retain that flexibility.
And I think that's correct. And I like the approach because I see as we go in the future that if we were to consider contract employees for department managers as an example, we would be in a situation of an RFP or an RFQ that we may not want to live with. You know, advertising for a job and then having to pick the low bidder, perhaps, or the presumed qualified bidder, or a person that may not understand the city, may not understand the staff, may not understand the council, I think would be an unfortunate situation. So I like the idea of moving into that employment status. I think our history has been somewhat different. And I think that the comfort in doing what we have been doing is pretty much determined by the fact that we've been with these folks for a long time. Neil Martin Associates has been our contractor. It's almost as though they're an employee. Some of the members of the firm have been employees. Parvise Moktari was an employee for many, many years, and he graduated and became a contractor. But nothing changed. The person stayed the same. So it's not as though we are now employing contractors that we have had to go to the market for. They had basically come to us through a matter of transition over time. And I think personally, that's been a very comfortable relationship. I really would not want to move in a different direction where we are actually going out to bid for important positions and having to trust the market and take what we get. So I think the direction is the way we should move.
Thank you.
I just actually had a question for clarification because it wasn't really outlined in this. I know under the former city manager, it seems to me there were 11 department heads, all reporting directly to the city managers. We had 12 direct reports, is that?
12 direct reports, I believe.
And under this new proposal, we've looked to consolidate administrative services under one direct report to the city manager, and that would be HR and finance. Am I correct?
HR, finance, and IT.
HR, finance, and IT. So we've taken essentially three positions and made them to one direct report.
Correct.
And then on the community services, basically, we've done the same thing. We've taken planning, housing, and building and rolled it all up into one direct report, which I think is a lot more manageable. And it also, I think, eliminates the potential for miscommunications between building and planning because they have to be on the same team and work together. And then are there other consolidations that you're, that I'm missing? Or, I mean, are you, then, would you be down to a more manageable number of eight direct reports, six direct reports?
Looking more at eight. And actually, the literature would suggest that six to eight is the proper number for complex tasks such as this. So I think we're getting into that realm. There still are any number of other activities, commissions, committees, boards, that the manager sits on, JPAs, that, you know, is a fairly diverse activity base in any event. manager sits on, JPAs, that, you know, is a fairly diverse activity base in any event. But no, I don't have anything else that I'm bringing forward at this time. I do believe that as we go through the budget process, that, you know, as some of these positions are filled, certainly those that we're doing with an internal promotion will create a vacancy, and we'll take a look as to whether or not there aren't some efficiencies or some streamlining that ultimately might be done, that might further reduce the span of control that the manager currently has. But I have nothing of that nature proposed at this time.
Okay. And I would just like to echo my support of Tom's comments, which is really, you know, I know that there's been a lot of discussion around use of contractors, and, you know, where their loyalties lie, and are they really true to San Carlos? And in the number of years, and I've been on various boards and commissions in this council now for over 15 years, it's been nice to have the same faces in the same meetings, because they actually do care very deeply about this city. And I think that people get awfully caught up in, well, is this the lowest price for the services? And in fact, I think that anybody who's ever managed individuals knows that the learning curve has a huge cost associated with it that oftentimes is hidden. And so I would just like to reiterate that I think that in the past, the contract approach has been the right approach, but as, but it's been because of the individuals, and the people who have, if we can keep really great people because of contract versus having to maybe find not-so-great people, because we're, our hands are tied, or your hands are tied by the need to fill in a permanent employee position, I think I'd much rather be able to have, you have that flexibility, and the council have the latitude, especially future councils. But I do agree that I think that clearly the handwriting is on the wall, and as the individuals who have been serving so well look to retirement, that, you know, perhaps it is an opportunity to reevaluate the nature of that relationship, whether it be contractual or employee-based. And when that time comes, it sounds like you've got some pretty clear ideas about that, some good experience, so.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. Can you please explain to us the difference between a contract employee and some of these other contracts we have? You know, we've been provided in our, in our staff report, copies of all the different contracts that we currently have. No real evaluation comparing one to the other, or really a definition necessarily. But this term of contract employee gets used, of course. Can you give us a definition of that?
I'll try. I'll qualify by saying I'm not an attorney, so luckily, we have one in the, in the audience here. But independent contractors are contractors that are working with perhaps a variety of different clients. They're independent, they, the contracts that you have with firms, Neil Martin and Associates, with Maktari Engineering are independent contractors. Contract employees are like your city manager. I'm an employee, I get benefits, I'm in the PERS system, I get very many of the same benefits that all the other employees get. What's different is that I have a contract that outlines what those benefits are, and it also outlines what a severance package might be, or what the termination clause might be, so that there's no misunderstanding. There's no confusion with respect to whether I have a property right in the position or not. It's spelled out within the contract. And so some cities will have certain positions that are contract employees, as opposed to employees, who, albeit maybe at-will, may also have their own perceptions with respect to the degree to which they are truly at-will, or what kind of other interests they might have in their position. And so there, the last city that I worked in, for example, gradually moved to a situation where the department heads were contract employees. They did not impose that on anyone in arrears, but moving forward, when new department head levels' positions were advertised, they were advertised as contract employees, so that the full rights that went with the position and the termination provisions were all spelled out within the contract itself.
Can you see any reason that we wouldn't want to possibly change some of our independent contractors to contract employees?
Well, I mean, at some point, you may want to consider, actually, at one point, when I was writing this, this report, I had a segment in there on the whole contract employee scenario. I chose not to bring it forward at this time, because there's an awful lot in this report, and I thought it muddied the waters a little bit. I don't know that it's necessarily essential, and it's not necessarily consistent with the idea that, you know, you were truly an employee-based organization. The concept is something unfamiliar with, and certainly comfortable working with that kind of an environment. I would suggest that if you're going to do that, that you consider doing it moving forward, so that when you create a new position, for example, the community development director of the position that we would reconstitute if you approved the reorganization, create a new job description, and we could advertise it, with the provision within it that this is a contract employee position, so that everyone knew that when they applied, that those were the rules that we were going to play by. I wouldn't try to impose that upon current employees unless they wanted to go down that path. I will say, you know, there are advantages and disadvantages to it. The, in some cases, it may be more difficult to attract quality employees, unless the provisions within the contract are written in such a manner that it's attractive to the employee. And otherwise, as I would propose it, as I've seen it implemented in the past, it would virtually be the same as the current situation that you have with your at-will department head employees. They would report to the city manager, they would be reviewed, you would see the contract for, the generic contract, but beyond that, the manager actually supervised that contract, evaluated the employees. Minor modifications to the contract were actually, in my last city, approved by the city manager, did not go back to the city council.
Let me interrupt you, I want to make sure I'm clear on what you're saying, and that the council's clear. With independent contractors, their contracts come to the council for approval.
That's correct, over a certain value.
With, right, over a certain value. With a contract employee, that's certainly the case with the city manager, we interview for the city manager and so forth. But with other department heads, that would not necessarily be the case. Am I correct on that? That'd be just like-
That is correct under the scenario that you have a city manager form of government. Now, if you want to change your form of government-
No, 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 we're not saying that. So please, you know, we can leave that-
There are other scenarios.
Can I try for another? Actually, I have a following question, too.
I'm not, he hasn't finished his answer yet, please, if you could finish your answer.
Well, I'm just saying that under the city manager form of government, the city manager is responsible for managing, managing the employees. And so under that scenario, the contract employee would be set up within a scenario whereby that person, that department director, would report to the city manager. The contract, the base contract would be, the model contract would be approved by the city council, so that you saw what rights and what provisions were being offered to employees. But there would even be some minor opportunity for there to be negotiations with employees, and to vary the contract to some degree, you know, within, within acceptable parameters. And I'd have to work with the city attorney to come up with what that might be, under his direction, here.
Mark, I see two issues with this contract employee. First would be, with the exception of the city manager, who reports to the city council, the other department heads or department head positions would fall within the management unit, right? And would that be a point of labor negotiation? To start to convert employees or positions that were formerly employees to contract employees would be one issue. The other issue where I say, where I would see a contract employee position having merit is where it's a performance-based position. It's either high visibility, or there's a high risk associated, and thereby, you would want to have a contract with that individual to ensure certain performance measurements are met. Perhaps like with police or fire, or something like, you know, and I'm throwing things out.
Well, no, you may make a good point. One of the downsides of that scenario is it may politicize those positions a bit. If there are, especially, especially depending upon who they report to, if you're going to change, again, the form of government, or if anyone is even thinking along those lines. It may politicize the nature of those positions, making it harder to attract people into those positions, and changing the nature of those positions. Changing the whole nature of the way that your government functions. And I mean, I've not heard anyone suggest that that is the intent with what we've been talking about here, so.
No, partly the reason I ask the question is because what we've been operating under with independent contractors is that council, those contracts are brought to the council, and we approve them, and essentially hire those people. And then the, it opens up to the question of who manages them, and who, to Brad's question about, you know, yearly evaluations, performance evaluations, well, we approve the contract, do we evaluate the contract, and how the contractor is doing in his or her job? Those are things that have been questions, in my mind, for the last four years, four, five years, because of the system we're operating under, and those things were never clarified. We just went down this road of using independent contractors without ever clarifying those points.
I agree that we should clarify the rules. I mean, and I think I said it at the last meeting, we need to deal with this issue and get it behind us. We have bigger issues than some of the procedural things that we're dealing with here. And I would encourage you to help us identify those things that you'd like to have addressed. I believe that we should have a standardized contract. I think that there ought to be similarities between the independent contractors that are being retained here, and I think we can do that. But I didn't go into a whole lot of detail with what those similarities, or what those review processes would be, or what I would recommend, because I thought it was maybe premature until we got some idea as to whether or not this was the general direction that the council was willing to accept. I do think that there ought to be an annual review. I would think that it would be at the staff level. I would think that you would do that every three to five years at the council level, and make a determination on that kind of a periodic basis as to whether or not you wanted to do an RFQ or not. Not to do it, but to make a decision as to whether you want to do it. And that's just because I don't think that you want to throw out your entire planning department every three years. You don't do that to employees. They're reviewed by the manager every year, there's consistency. You want some kind of buy-in from them, you want some kind of loyalty from them. I think you have to show that in return.
So some of the things that you're saying that were, well, obviously, I've said, there's really no great evaluation of the contracts themselves in this report, and you're saying, you're seeing that down the road. And some of the issues that I see in there are what Brad has brought up about annual performance review. You've brought up an RFQ, an RFP, whichever you want to call it, being looked at every two, three, four, or five years, whatever. I mean, that's open to discussion, but that needs to be there. The other thing that I noticed, when you look at the contracts we have, some, in some instances, they're paying office rent, and we know how much that is. In other instances, it's said that the fee is offset by the office rent that they would otherwise pay. I know in private industry, there are even cases like for contractors, and for IRS purposes, if you get a parking space, that's accounted for, you have to pay for it. You know, there's those kinds of things, reimbursables. There's nothing in these contracts about reimbursables, you know? I contract with people all the time. My contract says very clearly what to do about reimbursables and how those are handled. So those are kind of things that need to be in there. I also don't see anything in here, and I'm going to try to put this in the form of a You didn't make any evaluation of chapter three of our municipal code, which deals with how we hire consultants and contractors and so forth. And have you looked at that at all?
Yes. I mean, I've looked at, I've looked at that section of the municipal code. I've actually had conversations with the deputy city manager about other cities and other systems that are used elsewhere. The system that was used in La Quinta, I know that we've brought here to take a look at it, just because I'm familiar with it. There's nothing within it, though, that would preclude us. What it does is it suggests, again, within certain dollar values, that there's a process that you go through. It outlines what that process is, I think, in a bit more detail than what is currently within your municipal code. But it also has a caveat within it, that should the city council, for that dollar value that you make that determination, should the city council determine that the independent contractor that is being considered has the expertise, and is qualified, or perhaps has done work with the city before, that the city is happy with, that you may retain that person without going through the full process? And so that opportunity, even under that system, which is more detailed in another city, has a process, but it has caveats within it that would suggest to you that there are ways by which the city council may choose to vary from that process. And again, it gives you the flexibility, which what I would think you would not want to do would be to hamstring this city when the rules within the state are one-way. If you, you know, put a lot of rules and regulations on yourself, you're simply making it more difficult for you to respond and act within the environment that we're otherwise acting with other competing cities.
That may be true, but I think, my opinion is, our current municipal code in that chapter is, in this regard, is far, far too loose.
And I would not be opposed to revisiting that and bringing some thoughts back to you on that front, if you'd like.
I also feel like, and I appreciate that, and I think we need to do that, because it also, my impression from reading it, is it's been remodeled, if you will, over the years, and it doesn't read clearly because of that, because things have been changed and inserted without consideration to how it affects other parts of the same chapter. And so it's just become a poorly-written document because of the changes and addendums that have been made to it over the years, some of which we just made recently in response to the grand jury. So it does need review, I believe, by our city attorney, and be brought to council for determination on it.
If that's the council's wish, we would certainly be willing to bring it back.
One last question, and that is, Ingo pointed out about, you know, having fewer people report to you in what looks like consolidation. Can you explain to us, I'm not seeing, and I would like an explanation of how this is actually saving us any money, if indeed it is. Maybe it isn't, but I thought that was part of the goal, is to save some money on staff costs.
It is. We're doing an internal recruitment for the administrative services director, which indicates that there will be a position that's left vacant once we have a person promoted. The thought would be that the new administrative services director would look at all of the resources available to him or her within the administrative services department, and propose how to address the issues that are at hand with existing resources. That may or may not be possible yet. I have not appointed someone to that position as we speak, and so I'm not prepared to outline for you in detail what that plan might ultimately could include, because we just haven't gotten there yet. But I do believe that there may be some efficiencies within administration by moving all of those responsibilities under one person's direction. Taking a look at those organizations, sharing clerical resources, administrative resources, support staff resources within those areas, and then possibly even realizing some other savings at higher-level positions, depending upon how that particular department moves forward. I just simply can't go into more detail at this point, given where we are in the recruitment process on that front. With respect to the community development director, that position has not been filled for some time. Truly was an economic development director position, and had the economic, the current economic development director in housing position within that department. What I'm suggesting to you is that we take that position, make, recruited as a professional planner, take some of the money from, that is currently being allocated to the Neil Martin Associates contract, and diverting it to pay for a portion of, if not all of, but it's certainly a portion of the economic, or the new community development director position.
And then can you speak a little bit to the Neil Martin contract? If we were to take your number-one recommendation, which is to authorize us to go ahead with a contract with Neil Martin, and then, at the same time, allow you to go out and recruit for a community, I forget what the title is here that you have-
Community development director.
Can you, can you explain to us, you know, we've been so used to NMA's role as it is, with Liz being a planning director, and when you come in at the counter, you see a planner that is actually an employee of NMA, and so forth, how would that scenario-
I think that would still be the same. The one difference would be- The one difference would be that there would be a professional planner supervising that particular contract. The employees at the front counter, the employees that are provided, your planning staff would still be Neil Martin and Associates, but they would be reporting to an employee that would be a professional planner by trade.
But would there be some less time being used and that we would pay for from Neil Martin and Associates, from the, you know, sort of the top-level folks?
I believe so, yes.
And so, that's how you're expecting to pay for the new director? Is out of the savings from that contract?
Yes, because you will have a planner on board who can do some high-level planning duties.
Okay.
Part of that is contingent upon being able to find the right person for the job, you know? And that's really a critical component here with both that position as well as the public works director. I'm actually more nervous, and I shouldn't say this in front of the planners, but I'm actually more nervous about finding the public works director slash city engineer. It's a tight, tight market out there for a position like that or of that nature, for a city of this size with the kind of projects that we have before us. And so, you know, I've been in the profession for a while. I have found that to be one of the most difficult positions, to find quality people. And once you find them, you try desperately to hold on to them.
Okay, those are all my questions. We do have some speaker slips on this topic. Helen Mikovits, followed by John Hoffman, and those are the only two on this topic.
Good evening, Mayor Grokot and council members. My name is Helen Mitskevich. I've lived in San Carlos since 1989, and I have spoken before this body on this subject in the past, although Mr. Griselli and Mr. Lewis were not at that time members of the council. I was actually pleased to hear the recommendation from the city manager in that he talked about having some flexibility. He talked about having some, a plan to transition some positions into employee positions as opposed to independent contractors. I couldn't possibly disagree with Ms. Doherty and Mr. Davidson more in the sense that while it is a laudable goal to have familiar faces on the staff of the city, this body's responsibility is to make sure that the public's money is properly spent and lawfully spent. And I will repeat a little bit my concerns about independent contractors for city director positions, as I have spoken about this before. My concern is, number one, how are these contracts entered into? The individual who is, excuse me, let me start that sentence again. It is completely improper and inappropriate for someone who is going to bid on a contract to participate in the development of that contract and on behalf of the city as an employee and then bid on the contract as an independent contractor. That has happened in the past. Under state law, that would be flatly illegal, and I've raised that issue to the council before. And I sincerely hope that whatever the city is going to do going forward, it will not allow a repeat of that kind of activity. Secondly, I have concern about someone being an employee one day, and then the next day, suddenly, an independent contractor coming to the same office, performing the same job, the same scope of work, the same direction from the same body. How is that different? And under federal tax law, that person remains an employee and not an independent contractor. So, while I appreciate your position, Ms. Doherty and Mr. Davidson, it is great to have Mr. Moktari and Ms. Cullen in these positions, and you're right, I've worked with both of them, and they have done excellent work for the city, but it is this body's obligation to make sure the law is followed and the money is properly spent. And finally, I would support standardized terms and conditions in the contracts, as Mr. Weiss mentioned, not necessarily standardized contracts, but standardized terms and conditions in the contracts so that they all parallel each other. Thank you.
Thank you. John Hoffman, followed by Clint Miller.
I want to briefly address the philosophy of contracting versus employees. I think common sense and certainly private business gives a good example of this over 100 years. When you have someone filling a position on a regular basis, an ongoing regular basis, they come in, they do the job each day, that person is an employee. When you have a unique situation where you need expertise or you need something else that is not available to you within the organization, then you seek it on a short-term basis and you contract it out. I'm very much in agreement with what I hear from all five people on the dais and the city manager. We need to move toward employees, and we need to do it expeditiously. The sooner, the better. The Harvey Rose report tiptoed around the subject and was revised several times, but the net conclusion was that employees are the better alternative when you have someone on the payroll who is coming in each day to do the job day after day and has the expertise necessary for that position. Contractors will only accept a contract if they believe it is a better option than other things they have. And that should tell you that it is more likely to be more expensive to do a job by contract than it is to do a job by employee. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Clint Miller, San Carlos. Several things struck me about the discussion last week, at the last meeting regarding retention of contractors. One was quality. I'd never heard quality mentioned before as a criteria. It has always been cost. We were saving money by contracting. I've submitted a cartoon to you indicating that what I hear from City Hall is quality. We're getting quality. Well, I'm suggesting that the public has a different view of what we are getting, as typified by this cartoon, which appeared some years ago. With regard to cost savings, John Hoffman mentioned the Rose contract. There are two memos appended to this that indicate that we were saving significant amounts of money through contracting. These memos are completely at odds with what the Rose contract, Rose report concluded. This does not do much for the credibility of city government with its public. I believe that the contracting scenario that we have at this point is upside down. Department heads should not be contractors. We contract for people to fill special positions below when we have a special project for a short term. I believe that the system that we have at this point, up to this point, where the city code allows for contracting, is flawed. The system has been abused, and I believe that department heads should be prohibited from being contractors. Also, I've heard that it would be difficult to replace the contractors. Now, specifically, I did do some research on this, and this was specifically in reference to Department of Public Works City Engineer position. The California League of Cities has a public service skills section. It's possible to call them, and you could have, if you made that call tomorrow, you could have an interim contractor to fill a position. So, it's not something that is going to take two years, as is being proposed. I talked with an engineer. He suggested in six months, we could have someone on staff to do this. Let me conclude by saying that the contracting chapter that we are hopefully concluding here has not done the city's image any good. This is corrosive to the public trust, and it just doesn't go over. So, I would like to see the city move to employees.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes all those items. Open for discussion here on the part of the council.
Is there additional discussion here?
I'd like to call a question. Having said that, I didn't have any questions of the report, because I really believe that city manager Weiss is on the right track on this, and I think he should be given the opportunity as basically the chief executive officer of this city. In effect, city manager, formal government is really that, and we're the board of directors. Certainly, that can be tweaked, because it is, as Clint said, the public funds. You can't just necessarily divest yourself of the responsibility. But I applaud him for trying to change the culture and also change how we do it and take some steps in a different direction. So, I'm ready to vote, and I'm ready to make a motion that we, I don't know, through the city attorney, would we need a vote on each separate section, or can I just make one?
There's two issues. Use your recommendation.
Yeah, just go.
As, I was going to use the recommendation, but do I do it three times or one time?
Just do it one time. There's the reorganization issue. I think you just make it in one motion.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to make a motion that we, on the planning, there is no recommendation on the finance side. On the planning services side, the recommendation is to authorize staff to negotiate a revised contract with Neil Martin and Associates for planning services. On the public work side, authorize staff to negotiate a revised contract with Moktari Engineering for Services. As public works director slash city engineer and consider succession plans as part of the fiscal year '07 budget review, there's no item on the city, or no recommendation on the city attorney. And on the reorganization, that authorize staff to reorganize the planning, economic development, and billing departments into a new community development department. Did I miss one?
No, I would actually, the only recommendation that I wanted to add to that would be that we have the city manager come back to council at a future council meeting with either a proposal or a plan to demonstrate how annual reviews might be done, and not necessarily that they would be done as part of, it would be more performance reviews rather than, I'm assuming that how they, the contractual reviews are done automatically every month. When the bill comes in, they either reconcile against the contract or they don't, but just a, since they are independent contractors that are performing a function as if it were a department head or an employee, I think that they should at least have some performance review as to the performance of that body, whether it be planning services or public work services, the same as we would for a department head.
Does that fit Mr. Weiss with?
Yes, that would be perfectly appropriate.
Okay, I'll accept that as my motion.
One second.
As you know, I totally support the yearly performance review thing. I really would encourage us to look at the issues of terms and conditions and uniformity of contracts across the board, just as a agenda item at some point, because, I mean, there's many, many issues in the contracts that I think can be, you know, benefits, there's, you know, how we report hours, there's materials, space, vacation, yearly performance reviews. There really is, you know, we should have discussions about, maybe we have, when we have the RFP, RFQ discussion, maybe there's options in the contracts for term extensions and so forth. I think there's some ways that we can really look at these contracts. That's my only point of discussion, is I'd love to sort of package that and.
Perhaps that would be a separate, I mean, what we have is a motion that is allowing, authorizing staff to renegotiate contracts, and that as, after the motion goes through, if, assuming that it passes, then we could give direction to staff that would be more specific about some of the details or standardization of contracts or terms or things like that.
Right, I guess I'm just wondering whether or not that should be, the yearly performance review tagged onto the motion, whether or not we treat that as.
Do you want to remove that, Ingo?
Remove of contract.
No, I'd like to, I'd like to actually have as part of that, that they come back with a plan to, for a performance review.
I'll still accept it, yeah.
Okay.
Just as a practical matter, I mean, if we negotiate contracts with Moktari and Neil Martin Associates, we would bring back all of those issues at that time, because they're going to be in that contract. Yeah.
There's a motion and a second.
I haven't got a second.
Yeah, Tom seconded it.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Tom.
Okay, I'm going to put an alternate motion on the table. If we vote on that. Yes, I may do that procedurally.
Do you want to just have discussion and see if that?
We've had discussion on the motion that was made and seconded, did we not? Brad threw in some discussion.
I just didn't hear your issues with Bob's motion.
You don't have to. I'm going to put an alternate motion on the table, a substantive motion on the table. And the motion I will put on the table is to accept staff recommendations for planning services, to authorize staff to negotiate a revised contract with Neil Martin and Associates for planning services, and to begin recruitment for a community development director. Is that the right title, Mark? Regarding the public works city engineer, I would like to make a move that we take from item three, that is actually listed under planning, to authorize staff to create plans for an employee-based department and negotiate a contract with NMA for transition services. And the way I would word that regarding the city engineer public works director is that we authorize staff to recruit for a city engineer public works director and negotiate a contract with Harvey's Moktari or Moktari Engineering for transition, from having the situation we have now to having a situation of a full-time city engineer public works director. And thirdly, I would like to have as part of my motion that staff will bring back to the council an agenda item in the future on Chapter Three of the municipal code for a review of that chapter.
You lost me on the public works engineer.
What I'm suggesting, I don't think that it's prudent for us to recruit for an assistant public works engineer or public works director city engineer. I think we'd be far better now recruiting for a city engineer public works director, not an assistant, someone who has the qualifications to actually be the city engineer public works director. And then, we would have a contract with Moktari Engineering to bring us through a transition while we, after we hire somebody, that we would keep Moktari on board to bring through, us through a transition period of six months to nine months to, in order for that person to come up to speed, know the city of San Carlos, know what the issues are, et cetera. So, that's what I'm putting in my motion.
So, let's ask a man who has to run the city.
Before we, I'm sorry, technically, before we discuss this, we really need a second on it, and then we can discuss it. And a second is not saying yes, but a second is saying yes, it's worthy of discussion. So, if I hear a second, we can discuss it.
I wouldn't want a second until I clarify it, so.
So, motion dies for lack of a second.
It does. If you want a second, we can discuss it, and you can clarify all you want. It may die in a vote.
Well, we do have a motion and a second on the table already.
I'll second it for discussion, because I'm curious about the period of time, so.
Go ahead, Tom. You made.
So, the question, Mark, why go for an assistant rather than go for the lead guy right off the bat? I think that's the bottom line that Matt's getting to.
There's a couple of reasons. One is it's a difficult position, and I've talked with a professional recruiter, headhunter. It's a difficult position to fill, so that's one reason. Number two, you have with Mr. Moktari someone with an incredible amount of experience and knowledge with respect to this city. And I believe that that information that Mr. Moktari has should be shared with somebody who would be in a subordinate position for some period of time while he learned this organization and all of the history that is pertinent to San Carlos. So, that is the reason, those are the two primary factors for my recommendation. There might be a third factor, and that might relate to what Mr. Moktari might be willing to do. I mean, he's a player in this as an equal partner in many ways. And in any event, I would strongly suggest that we pursue the options that I've outlined, the recommendation that I've outlined. With respect to funding, I think that's something that we're going to have to address within the budget year. I think that's something that we're going to have to address within the budget year and within the timeframes that we have. I mean, I think we can structure it in such a way that we can fund part of it next fiscal year and be prepared perhaps more fully to fund the entire position the following year.
So, why is not the position in the city of good living just the very best position that anyone wants anywhere, and they'll just come flooding to us? What's it about San Carlos that makes it a difficult position?
It's not necessarily about San Carlos. It's a difficult position to fill because you require a licensed engineer that has public skills in working with... In a public arena, working with people. You have a number of different committees, commissions, citizens groups. So, you're looking for somebody that has the license, is a practicing engineer, has all of the technical skills, but also has the social skills. And so, it's a very difficult package in many cases to find. And that's just based upon my experience. In other cities, larger and smaller, and you know, I guess there is one other factor specific to San Carlos, and that is that we are a relatively small city, and we have a relatively small budget in terms of... I mean, we have a lot of issues. We have a lot of public interest and participation. But in terms of being a city that, in the public works field, has a lot of exciting projects on the table, you know, they're not there at the moment because there's not revenue there at the moment to support them. And so, given all of those things, I think you're gonna have a tough time finding somebody to fill Mr. Mactari's shoes.
So, starting with a... I wouldn't say a rookie, but starting with someone who's a bit lower on the Public Works poll, we give an opportunity to bring someone in, acclimate him to the process, him being able to grow and not being squelched by the basic fact that we don't have a whole lot of money, we don't have a whole lot of interesting projects.
You said it better than I.
Okay. You know, I think it's... There's some reality there. So, thank you.
I have some questions about that, just based overall flexibility. Typically, in a situation like this, in my experience, you know, somebody has a set period of time where it's like, in two years, I'd like to retire, or whatever the case may be. And then for the entity or the company or whatever, in this case, the city, it's what makes for the most stable situation for the organization ultimately. And so, there's kind of a give-get thing. There's some amount of time that the employee wants, there's some stability that we need. I mean, I think right now, one of the issues is, you know, new city manager, to a certain degree, a couple of new council members, you know, new finance directors moving on, HR directors moving on. We have a lot of reorganization taking place this year. So, what I like about a little more time is stability, is stability with a lot of experience in an area that's really important to the city. The question for me to flex... Goes to flexibility, and that is, assuming we find a talented assistant Public Works person, is the timetable flexible based on when that person comes up to speed, and then when we actually make that transition? Are we thinking of this as a set period of time?
I mean, I think it's always flexible. The... You know, once we know what the skillset might be of the person that we find for the position, once we know what has been the approved work plan for the coming year, once we know what Mr. Mactari's plans are in more detail... I mean, he's given me a date, but we haven't tied any of this down in, you know, in a contract yet. All of that will be subject to negotiation and brought back to you for approval. So, I mean, I think it needs to be flexible. It also needs to be flexible from our standpoint, that we're able to find somebody that can perform in that capacity to your satisfaction. You know, yeah, I mean, they're... I can get you an engineer within a matter of months. That's not the issue. It's a matter of whether or not you can get a good fit for this particular position in this particular city.
Right. That's... To me, it's competence and stability in transition, and whether or not that's, you know, a shorter or longer period of time is what's the right period of time with getting the... Having that transition happen appropriately.
My... The reason I'm making this motion is because my concern is if we go out and recruit knowingly for an assistant, number one, I don't... I haven't heard that there's more assistant City Engineer, Public Works Directors out there chomping at the bit than there are City Engineers, Public Works Directors, in other words, you know, the top-notch guys. So, I don't know that it's a recruitment difference between the two, but folks, as I see it, I would much rather go out there and search and look for the most qualified, top-notch guy that we can possibly get, which is going to be someone who's ready to fill in the shoes of a City Engineer/Public Works Director, not an assistant. If we go out and go through all the pain and suffering of this recruitment process and get an assistant and get them onboard, and then six, seven, eight, nine months, a year down the road, we find out this guy's really not qualified for the top-notch position, now we're in a worse place than we started because Mr. Mactari is closer to his date where he would like to leave in June of 2008, and we're stuck having to recruit again for somebody. And at that point, we will have to recruit for a City Engineer/Public Works Director, not an assistant. So, to me, it seems like a much better way to go, to go ahead and get the guy we want now, and as, you know, the contract with Mactari Engineering could state such that, you know, we do our recruiting for however long that takes. It could take, shoot, a year. Who knows? But once that person's hired, from the day that person's hired, then the clause would say, you know, it's six months, and then we'll evaluate, and then maybe another three months, we'll evaluate until we feel like we're ready to give this guy the reins and let him run with it.
Matt, with all due respect...
To me, that seems like a much better...
I think, I mean, we've got a city manager who is our CEO, if you will, and we're a board of directors. I think, you know, what I'm hearing you try to... I fear that the city council is being asked to get into a position of managing what is really the city manager's purview. If his recommendation today is to come back with this junior level, he's got a transition plan in mind, it's cleared out, clearly spelled out in the staff report what the transition plan is. It's anticipated to be about two years, which I think even if he goes out tomorrow and gets a top-notch person, he finds that person, I would trust the city manager to come back to us and say, you know what, between him, Parvies, and this candidate, that their recommendation is to hire a higher-level individual and to shorten a transition plan. Or it may be that there's nobody out there, and this makes a lot of sense. So, I guess I'm just not really convinced that there's a need at this point to tell the city manager what level of person he should be hiring, but that we as a city council should allow the city manager to make a recommendation that we support him in that.
Inga, you make it sound as though...
I'm not arguing with you, Matt.
We shouldn't even be here evaluating. Item 5 under Options for Provisions of Public Works Director is provide staff with alternative direction.
I agree, and you've done that.
I have just done that.
And I appreciate your comments.
I have done that. So, I don't appreciate being told that doing so is somehow a...
Matt, you know what, I'm sorry. I'm entitled to give my opinion and my... And it's not disrespectful to you, it's simply expressing a different opinion. And I'm sorry that you chose to take my comments personally. They're in no way meant to be a personal attack against you. It was simply me expressing my opinion about what I feel that the role of this city council is as it relates to personnel matters.
And I'm saying the role of this city council is also to provide staff with alternative direction when we see fit, and to evaluate the staff reports and the information we've been given, and then to make a decision.
The chair?
You may.
The procedure is which motion goes first?
The motion... The last motion goes first.
Substitute motion. Okay, so, I'll take the vote. On the substitute motion, Grokot and Lewis accept staff recommendation for Planning Services with Neil Martin Associates, begin recruitment for a Community Development Director, and authorize staff to recruit for a Public Works Director of Transition Contract. Motion also included staff bringing back an agenda item regarding Title 3 of the San Carlos Municipal Code. Councilmember Davids?
No.
Councilmember Gasilli?
No.
Councilmember Lewis?
No.
Councilmember Tigglethorpe?
No.
Mayor Grokot?
Yes.
Okay. On the main motion?
Okay. On the main motion, I'd like to make a friendly amendment to that motion, which would be to include the item on the Chapter 3 of the Municipal Code, that that would be brought to us by staff for evaluation.
I'd like to actually have that broken out as a separate motion.
And I guess you could do that by moving it as a substitute motion.
You want to...
Excuse me?
Bobby, you want to do that?
We'll just take them one at a time.
Okay, we can do so.
Is that okay? Matt, we'll take...
Sure.
Okay, let's start right out. Christine?
Okay. Councilmember Gasilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Davids?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Tigglethorpe?
Yes.
Mayor Grokot?
Yes. Okay, now I'm gonna make the motion, okay, that we have staff bring back to council a staff report on Chapter 3 of the Municipal Code. Excuse me?
Title 3.
312. Okay, thank you for that clarification, so that we might have discussion and evaluation of that chapter.
Second.
Motion, a second. Discussion. No discussion, we can take the vote.
Councilmember Davids?
Yes.
Councilmember Gasilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Tigglethorpe?
Yes.
Mayor Grokot?
Yes. Okay, moving on. Item 10B is discussion of relocations of City Hall and other facilities.
Mayor, members of council, earlier tonight, you kicked off the discussion of the council's strategic goals and objectives, and this is the first and now a series of reports you will see over the next six months about that topic. During your retreat, one of the items that the city council adopted was the concept of discussing whether or not you wish to relocate City Hall and other city facilities. You have in your council packet a staff report on that topic that I've put together in association with the Park and Rec Director, Community, or the Economic and Redevelopment Director, and Public Works Director. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have on that topic.
Okay, questions?
Well, it was a fine report, Brian, considering the questionable element here. I guess, you know, it's kind of an intriguing opportunity, or a possibility, I should say. But I really wouldn't want to spend any money to take the first step. And I know that there is some indication here that we could go out for contract and consultants and so forth. It seems to me it's a fairly simple start. We got X amount of square footage on this block. If we throw in the two properties, the library and the citizens, or the adult community center, or not, whatever the number is, we have a certain amount of square footage. It's worth a certain amount to a developer for housing at a certain level of development. And if the hacienda across the street is typical, there's a certain units per square... Per acre. And that means that there's a certain market value, it translates to a certain land value, and that gives us a base point. If we take that money and we translate it to the east side, what can we do with it? What's the value over there? How many dollars are left? What will that build us? And what will that leave on the table that we have to raise? And if we're gonna move at all on this, I would suggest we do a simple start and just get some basic numbers from friends in the industry who know these things and who could talk to us, without doing a lot of planning and, you know, really getting into something. Because I'm afraid that we're gonna end up with a huge number. And if we do, you know, how are we gonna pay for it? And then, you know, we start that discussion, and we have a public-ish situation, and I don't know where it goes from there.
I would agree. Councilmember Davids, and certainly in the rough numbers that staff looked at, the numbers were pretty big. Just to move City Hall alone, you're looking at $40 to $60 million. And if you're adding in the swing pool and the fields and the other amenities that were talked about, you could be in the $75 to $100 million range. And we really don't have any reserves at all to work with. I think one of the advantages we had during the library project, as some of you probably recall, is we... This was back during the boom times. We had a $3 million surplus for the library. We had the $8 million bond that the voters approved, and we had another $800,000 surplus on top of that for the second-floor tenant improvement. So, we were in a very good position. Right now, of course, we have a $2 million general fund deficit. We really don't have any surplus monies to work with. So, this would be a very challenging project in... Under any scenario.
Tom, I would just like to throw out some caution here. I, as Chair of the Planning Commission during the Pacific hacienda project, and Bob sat with me on Planning Commission during that, just the amount of public resistance to change in this area for the project across the street was tremendous. And that I think that if we, in fact, were to even give any type of consideration to this, we may start a civic war around here that we may not want to start fighting at this time when we've got so many other really big issues on the table, like fire, like PAMP. So, while this may... There may be a better and higher use for the property that the City Hall and Civic Center sits on, I have a hard time believing... I know when they did... Worthman did the project across the street, I think, what, they paid $5 million?
Something on that order, yes.
For the land, and then the actual... I don't know what the cost of the project was, but I can't imagine any developer paying the city $40 to $50 million for us to tear down a almost brand-new library and relocate not only City Hall, but all of the necessary infrastructure for public safety and...
Right. Well, there's a couple charges, I think, that you have in this particular site. One is, remember that this is a two-and-a-half-story building, because we do have a portion of the police facilities in the basement. We have underground parking that we'd have to replicate. I think a question that arose at the staff level last week as we were working on this was the question of where on the east side you might put this. Public Works pointed out to us that under many portions of the east side, the water table is at a certain level where you really couldn't do underground parking to begin with. And then, of course, you might have cleanup issues. As you know, in the PAMP site, for example, they are actually transferring their land ownership to a cleanup company to do cleanup. So, a lot depends on what site you were looking at. Is there cleanup? I know during the fields discussion, the Citizens Committee talked about having a new field on the east side of town, and one of the problems they ran into when they asked staff to research that is most of the parcels of any size on the east side now have businesses or homes on them. So, you'd have to buy not only the land, but the structures and clear them. So, it is a very expensive proposition. I mean, under the best scenario, we might have some sort of land swap if we had a really nice developer who would buy the land for us and clean it up for us and relocate the people and not charge us anything. But I think that's a pretty optimistic scenario.
Well, you know, I think that, you know, when you think outside the box, you're always by yourself. And not that you're by yourself tonight, Matt, but you may be to the point of... There's a lot of things, you know, having built things and tried to go in and create different kinds of scenarios, there's a lot of different ways to do, you know, and I, you know, I'm not gonna question the staff report, because I didn't put the time in, whether it's $40 to $60, or whether it's $4 to $6, or $200 million. I mean, I can't question the numbers because I haven't done the research. But the problem I have with it is the timing, in that we have so much on our plate right now. I just don't think I can go to another meeting concerning something like this. This is a huge thing that I think... I know Foster City has 15 acres sitting over there. They have 15 empty acres. And they're having a... Their whole focus, I think, this year, most of their focus is gonna be what to do with those 15 acres. But that's all they have to worry about, except for a little Duffy in a Waterway-type thing. But we have some huge, in my opinion, issues to deal with. And I'm not saying we should reject this out of hand. I just think that we should postpone, if nothing else, this situation for a time, whether it be this year, or whether it be nine months from now, or whether it be 12 months from now, and step back and come up with some unofficial ideas of how to do it, and then maybe come back to it. But honestly, tonight, I... And I conveyed this to you earlier, I just... I can't support any kind of time being spent or money being spent on this item at this instant. It's just difficult for me because of the time issue and the timing of it.
I'm gonna stop, council, right here, because, Tom, I'm going to...
I'm going to stop council right here, because, Tom, I'm going to use some corrective language here, and I don't like doing this, but I'm going to reel things in as the Chair here. Brian just gave us a staff report, and I do this every time on every item. I then open it up to questions. The idea is that you, as councilmembers, if you have questions about the staff report that was written, you can ask the staff person who has presented it about any questions you might have from having read the staff report and items you do not understand. I have not heard one iota of that type of thing going on here. I've heard comments made to Brian, I've heard comments made to councilmembers and to, you know, councilmembers to me. We're now in the mode of discussion, we're not there yet. I open it up to questions of staff. This gentleman here, our Assistant City Manager, wrote the staff report, if you have any questions of him, you may ask him, and then we will open it up to discussion amongst the council members, and we can get into discussing the item. And I hate to do this, but we need to go through a certain procedure here, and I like to follow that procedure, it's the way I like to run the meetings, and so I'm reeling you in. If you have any questions of Mr. Mora on the staff report, please ask them now, and then we will open it up for discussion. Thank you.
Just a point of clarification for future, should we clearly say if we don't have questions, no questions? I mean, would that help speed the process?
That would be helpful, yes, that would help speed the process.
Because I assumed that, looking around, Brian gave the staff report, everyone sort of looked at each other, agreed, we didn't have any questions, and so launched into discussion, which I think tries to move the meeting along more expeditiously in the interest of the public's time.
I'm actually, I'm happy for the clarification, because there's actually times, and perhaps it's just me being new to council, but there's times where we go right to discussions, sometimes we do questions for staff and so forth, and I get a little bit twixt in between. And, you know, I try to do the homework and I make some comments, and then it's sort of like, you know, when's the right time to get in? So I don't mind a little bit of structure, and I think we can move it along.
Thank you.
I have a question for Mr. Mora, and that, what would be the cost of the RFP?
What we would envision, if the council was interested in pursuing this idea, some of the things Mr. David suggested, praising this site to see what it would be worth, both the property and the building, and also we would talk about what it would cost to build a new facility, and that was part of what I was trying to draw out in the staff report, is find out what items on this site you might want to relocate. The goal that you put up in your session in February, as you described it as the concept of relocating City Hall and other facilities, wasn't clear to staff what the other facilities might be. So we wanted to clarify that, and then we also wanted to clarify what it was you wanted to create in the new location.
I understand, I'm really just trying to get, and maybe it's not easy to determine what the cost would be without figuring that out, but it's the development of an RFP, to see if there's developers who might be interested. Is there a cost to that process?
Sure.
Okay, and approximately what that cost is?
If that's all you wanted, I think the cost would be relatively low. If you wanted to look at some of the other questions, it would be more, but I would say, you know, it could be as low as twenty-five to fifty grand. If we wanted to get a little more aggressive, it could be a hundred thousand.
Great, thank you.
Okay, Brian, I have some questions. I'm curious, being that, you know, I brought this up at the council retreat, this was part of the out-of-the-box, big picture thinking--
Right, the infrastructure group.
That I thought we were going to do at the retreat, and so I was bound and determined to get this in there at the retreat. Where did the idea of other facilities come from?
The other facilities was part of the goal that you approved that was in the report from Marilyn Snyder, who was the facilitator.
Oh, okay, there must have been some misunderstanding there, because when I made the statement, I had no intention, and in fact, I thought it was pretty clear and explicit in my language, that I was just talking about the building that we're sitting in, City Hall. And maybe, I know I talked to Tom about this at one point, and maybe it was in my conversations with Tom, that I was very clear there, I'm not talking about City Hall Park. City Hall Park is beautiful, it's a great venue from San Carlos Avenue, to be able to drive down and look over and see that park, I'm not talking about that. I'm not talking about moving the senior center, it was just built not too long ago, and I'm not talking about moving the library, that definitely was built very recently. I was just talking about City Hall itself, so I was a little curious how that got in there.
Well, yeah, what we did is we went back and looked at, well, we looked at the report that you adopted at your last meeting, and it clearly said, and other facilities, wasn't clear from the staff perspective whether you meant other facilities here, other facilities the city might own elsewhere. So that's one of the questions we're asking you tonight, is, is it just City Hall, or are there, you know, other facilities, quote-unquote? Sounds like no, from your perspective.
I guess I would, you know, similar to Inga talking about earlier, about calling us and asking for dates and times before we set up meetings, if there's something that's not clear, especially being that I was the, kind of, the author of this whole thing, just a quick phone call to say, what did you mean by this, would have been nice.
Yeah, well, again, since you adopted it at the last meeting, we assumed all five of you were comfortable with that language.
Through the chair, if I might just add, though, Mr. Mayor, I mean, you and I have spoken not about the library, and, because I understood that you had no intention of including the library or the park, but we have talked about a pool, we have talked about a sports complex, we have talked about other facilities that might be part of a Civic Center complex on the east side. And so maybe there was a miscommunication on my part with Brian in terms of not making it perfectly clear with respect to the library or the park itself. I mean, I wasn't thinking in terms of moving the park, or the senior center, for that matter, but I was under the impression that you were speaking of something larger, including a sports complex, a pool, and other things. And that's why the number itself can grow very large, we need to get some sense, and if one of the ideas is that we're going to sell this site, I mean, we can do an RFP and try to figure out what this site will bring, but, you know, do you want to put somebody through that to develop plans, to do a prospectus, to do a pro forma, to find out whether or not they can make it pencil, just to buy the site and develop it, without knowing exactly what kind of a development might ultimately get approved by the city, without having some sense as to whether or not you have a financial plan to take it the next step, yourself, to acquire the property and build another facility at another location? We simply want to know from the council as to exactly what the concept is, and how much time and resources, you know, of our time and resources, you want us to commit to this project at this time.
Okay, let me tell you what the concept is, then, since you asked the question. I appreciate your clarification, and, not to beat a dead horse, but the first sentence here says, "Staff recommends that city council discuss and determine its interest in the concept of relocating City Hall and other facilities." And so that's, and then it got into the library, and the senior center, and the park, and so forth. So you're correct, Mr. Weiss, I did talk about, at the new location, the new campus, including in that project, at least space when you purchase land for a swimming pool, a sports complex, and I was asking for clarification from Barry, unfortunately, he's out of town, but what does he mean, or what did the Fields Committee mean when they talked about a field, you know, sports complex? Did they mean like a, like you see at a high school with, you know, a short stadium and a field, maybe a track around it? I wasn't sure, but I would certainly like to know. So let me just clarify what I was meaning with this, and some ideas that I had about it, so that, you know, I've gotten a lot of flack on this, actually, from some folks in town, and then the newspapers and so forth, so I just want to be very clear what I was talking about here. I was talking about this site, where this building is, and I happened to notice one day that if you look at this building and compare it to the building that haciendas was replaced with across the street, just the Elm Street building, it's an eighty-seven-unit building, has almost the exact same footprint as this building. So the idea struck me, first, to build housing here and work a deal with the JPB on the land at the railroad, because I am loath to put housing next to the railroad, I just don't think it belongs. So the idea was to move us over there. Now, I asked Mark to talk to Mike, what's his, what's his head?
Scanlon.
Yeah, Scanlon, thank you very much, Mike Scanlon, about it, and I don't think we got too much interest out of it. So then the concept changed a little bit, and the idea was, again, to develop this site for condominium housing. If you look at the prices across the street, those are going for, currently, around six hundred for one bedrooms, nearly a million for three bedrooms, I believe. So if we could not sell this land to a developer and have him develop it, or him or her, but that we keep it, we hire someone to do the development, the actual architectural drawings and the construction and so forth, but then we sell it. And as that money comes in, we make seventy-five million dollars potentially. That money we use for the new City Hall site and construction and so forth. Now, in the interim, we'd probably have to sell bonds in order to buy a new site and start construction on it, and get City Hall going, but then pay those bonds back as we sell the condominiums. The other idea that I had involving this is, we own three pieces of property next to parcels where we've been trying to put housing and have failed. South Plaza, we own one piece of property, it would probably sell on the market today for about a million dollars. Wheeler Plaza, we own two pieces of property, we could probably sell those two properties for two million dollars. That's three million dollars that we could put into a housing project on this site. Now, when we look at property someplace else on the east side, I think there is the potential, in one fell swoop, to answer some problems that the citizens of the community have seen for years, a swimming pool and a field, a sports complex, as well as a City Hall that would be brand-new and wouldn't be as inefficient as this one is. And we all know that this is an inefficient building that needs huge remodeling, and look at this room we're in. It's got seismic problems that are going to come up in the future, and every time we do work on this building, we run into situations where, because of the current building code saying, if you spend X amount of dollars, you have to upgrade this or that, we get into things that we didn't even expect. So this building is old, it's at least going to need renovation. I saw this as a potential opportunity where we could not worry about remodeling this building, but get a new building. So that was my concept, and that's how I put it out there. Now, all I'm looking for tonight is not to build City Hall tomorrow, or sell the property tomorrow, but my question is, how much money would we be needing to spend, or even willing to spend, to, you know, do some kind of low-cost research into some of these ideas and see where we could go with it? That's the only thing that we'd be looking for. Maybe, as Bob suggests, we don't do it immediately, we've got plenty of things on our plate to deal with right now, but we may want to look at it in the next fiscal year, and somewhere towards the end of the next fiscal year, where we research this idea and see if we can get going on it. Now, if council has no interest in it, that's fine, but that's my proposal.
Are we doing discussion now?
We're into discussion.
All right, thank you.
I just--
Do we take public comment on this?
No, I just--
Actually, we do have public comment on this item.
I just want to address something, which is, you know, in this climate of costs and budget constraints and the projects, I just don't see that I can support spending any amount of money for this. If the city, if we as a council decide we should be in the business of putting together housing, then, heck, let's figure out how to get some bonds and put in some affordable housing instead of million-dollar condos just to relocate City Hall. I don't believe that's serving anybody, to create a grandiose city plaza where, I think this one works perfectly good. I've been, I mean, I've been a resident of San Carlos for more than forty years, and this building has served the city well, and I think that this center has served the city well, and it is, it is one of the hallmarks that create, that make this area what it is. And so as much as, I mean, I don't want to just lambast your idea because I don't think it's going to work, I just don't think that, I think we really have bigger fish to fry with everything. I don't want to see staff spending any more time, and quite frankly, Matt, I'm a little bit concerned, because in our Code of Ethics document, no one council member is supposed to be directing staff to do anything specifically. And from what I heard you say a couple of times, you've asked Mark Weiss, as our city manager, to do things that only you have asked him to do, or only you have wanted him to do, without I coming before the full council for even buy-in. So I would admonish you just to be cautious of that in the future, and, but in the meantime, I applaud your trying to think out of the box. I just don't think that this is the year, or this is the term for us to be even looking at relocating City Hall. I don't see any benefits to it at all, including, well, with the exception of maybe a sports complex. But I know Brad and I have worked on the Alternative Parks Funding Committee, and we've been trying to figure out how to pull together, you know, what is it, five to ten million dollars to try to acquire some additional parkland, and even that has been a struggle. So, and that, I think, would serve the city a lot better than, you know, selling overpriced housing in the middle of our downtown. That's my comments.
I want to make some follow-up comments to those, but for procedural reasons, I have been remiss and did not ask for public comment, and even though this is not a public hearing, I have two speaker slips on this subject, Margaret Desmond and Pat Bell. Since you're sitting next to each other, I'll let you decide who goes first.
Hi, I'm Margaret Desmond, I live on the east side, and I just wanted to give you my view, as a person that lives on the east side, and some of my neighbors that I've talked to, about this whole issue, and we're somewhat, feel like we're being rather disrespectful to us on the east side by simply throwing out the east side. We'd like to know, if you even considered doing anything like this, you even moved on it, you should give us some kind of parameters of what kind of land you'd be looking at, where? Are you going to, is it going to be near our homes, number one? I mean, what about, you know, the noise, the traffic? I mean, the noise will be happy noise, I understand that, I'm not against that, but there's a lot of things that'll really impact us there. There's a limited amount of space on the east side where you can go, and you've already heard some of the geological reasons also. We live right on that, where there's the water table and so on, but I don't think you should proceed anywhere. Maybe you can't tell us specifically what you have in mind. I can accept that, but I would want to know, what is the selection, the criteria, that you would use to look for land? Are you going to say it's not going to invade anybody's homeland? Are you going to take our land from our, under our homes? There's just all kinds of speculations that we might start getting into if we don't have those kind of parameters, and that I think it would show us a great deal of respect. Thanks.
Thank you, Margaret. And I will make some comments later to your thing, so you know. Pat Bell.
Pat Bell, San Carlos. I'm opposed to this for several reasons. First of all, our city is operating with a police department that has just the bare minimum staff needed. Our fire department has less than the bare minimum staff. We keep hearing that we're broke, and we're in debt, and we have to cut back. So what the heck are we doing, talking about borrowing money to build luxury condos on spec? I mean, come on. When you're broke, you don't go buy, borrow money to buy, to build something like that. What if the housing market tanks, and you get stuck with the whole thing? I mean, Mr. Mora said, we don't have any reserves. I didn't need him to tell me that. And I live on the east side, and I would say to you, all of whom I think live on the west side, if you want to bring in all that traffic and all that noise, why don't you do it on your side of town? Because I don't want it on my side of town. You put in a sports complex and a stadium, the next thing you know is a PA system. And if you've ever lived near a stadium, you know that that noise carries a long ways. It won't carry over the grade separation to your house, but it'll carry a long ways to my house. And for all I know, the thing will be next door to me. Like Margaret said, we have no idea where on the east side this thing is going to go. And we have our own traffic problems. You want more traffic? Fine, put it on your side of town. You want more noise? Put it on your side of town. That's fine with me, except that you can't afford to do it. And I, too, have taken an informal poll of my neighbors, and I didn't find anybody who thought this was a good idea. So I don't want the staff to spend a minute working on this and thinking about it, and I just--
Thank you, Pat. We got it.
You want to think about it? Think about it.
I just do want to make a comment to Margaret's issue about where, and at least in my thinking, I could say I would definitely not think of taking anybody's home in order to put in a City Hall, so rest assured there. Specifically where I've been advised by Mr. McTary not to say, I've got some ideas in my mind, but as soon as you start talking about that, if you're going to be negotiating for property, you've just raised the price by talking about it publicly, so you can't really say, well, I'll talk to you later about it. Okay. Counsel.
Further discussion? From my vantage point, one of the, it's always hard whenever you have a budget deficit. It's like, okay, so let's not think about anything big or broad or anything like that because it's like, well, it's difficult to think about at this point in time. But I do think one of the, one of the things that is exciting about being involved in San Carlos is having a big vision and thinking about what do we want in San Carlos like 20 years from now? So whether or not it's any one particular idea or not, I would really encourage us to have a broader discussion at some point in time that takes a big concept like this. I think Mr. Moore did a great job of doing a quick analysis of something like this. And you start to get some, you know, sort of gross feasibility sense for it. Vice Mayor David's, you know, suggested, you know, some other ways that we can further sort of keep it light and quick, which I think is great. I actually would love to hear council members' ideas about broader visions for San Carlos. The Parker Rec Commission, three years ago, did a document on, we did some different visioning, which took a lot of these other facilities into account, whether it's community building or the community pool or, you know, another field or two, talking about, you know, bike paths and how to make San Carlos more walkable and all this. So I do really like getting engaged and thinking about some of these broader, whether it's outside the box, it's a little bit of an overused phrase these days, but just thinking broadly about what do we want San Carlos to look and feel like? And, you know, trying to make something out of the Al Camino corridor right now, I think is admirable thinking because it's a tough, it's a tough problem with a narrow strip of land there. So at any rate, what I would like to say is I think that we should have broader vision discussion. I think it should, it probably needs to take place nine to 12 months from now because we've got a lot on our plates. But to be able to throw out a good concept, check the feasibility of it and sort of wrap our heads around a little bit, I think it's important for us to think like, to think like that and engage in those conversations, engage the community in those conversations. So I like the thinking. I'd like to broaden the discussion and have the council engage in that maybe down the road.
But on this item, you know, which way do you want to go?
I'm sorry?
On this particular item, which direction would you like to go?
I'd like it to be thrown into the thinking of other big thoughts of things that would take a heck of a lot of effort over a number of years and a lot of money. So I think it should be considered along with other ideas, and I'd like to see that other ideas also come to the surface.
And so you would suggest bringing that into our, when we look at strategic planning in the future, have reports back from...
Perhaps. I think one of the things that we didn't get to in this last session, I'm hoping we get to in the next session, is us bringing some strategic ideas for the city together and actually just sort of having some discussion about that. I think there are some big ideas that we should consider and discuss, and so this should be amongst those ideas and do that down the road.
I did, I said I wanted to comment on a couple of things that Inka pointed out. Number one, housing. When I talked about what houses go for over at the haciendas, I was trying to give the idea of the value, the market value of those current units and what they sell for. And those are the market rate units. There are also there in the haciendas, the Pacific hacienda complex, below market rate. And I didn't talk about those, but it exists, and in this proposal, there certainly, heck, if it's our own project, we could say, forget about the 15% that's city ordinance. We could do 25% if we wanted. We could put it, you know, wherever we saw fit and would still bring in the necessary money. As far as directing the city manager or any staff, I handled this exactly the way it's supposed to be handled. I brought it to the Strategic Planning Workshop or the council retreat. It was discussed. It was put forth. It got put on that report, and here it is now. I did not ask staff to do anything on my own. Mark and I have talked about it because I meet with Mark frequently, and in some of our discussions, we've talked about it, but I wasn't asking him to then, you know, go out and research this for me. This research that Brian did didn't come about until this was put on the, came through the council retreat in the proper manner.
Yeah, I would, I would just say that I think our timing is a little bit premature. Perhaps we could put this on the agenda when we reconvene for our strategic planning discussion in August and keep it on. I really, I'm kind of with Brad. I like the idea of big thinking. I'd also like the idea of big thinking in terms of really doing the Wheeler Plaza project, which has been on our plate for a long, long time, and I don't think we ought to just dismiss it because it's still there, it's still an opportunity. I think South Plaza, in another sense, is also an opportunity. So there are a lot of opportunities, but during the next six months, I prefer that our city manager concentrate on hiring the right people for these positions and dealing with his reorganization and dealing with Palo Alto Medical Foundation and dealing with the fire department and dealing with the turf and dealing with all the other things we have on our plate. There'll be a time for this, and I think what you've done is to surface it, and we're starting to get public input on it, and I think that's good. And as time goes on and the public continues to respond, we'll be better able to judge, I think, the political will to proceed.
Okay. So we've had discussion. I don't see any votes for going forward with any kind of motion to direct staff to spend any more time on this, so we will move on on this item if that's to the pleasure of everyone.
Yeah, Matt, I have to leave at 10:30 again. So if I could request that we take item 10D ahead of 10C, I'd prefer to be here for at least part of the fire services discussion.
You want to change the order of the agenda for 10D?
Yes, to bring that forward.
Sure.
Why don't we, while we're at this point, do we want to, we're going to get to the 10:30 witching hour real soon. Do we want to make a motion to extend the meeting beyond 10:30 to some given point?
Well, yeah, I think I'll move, we extend until 11:00.
11 o'clock? Do you have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. We will take item 10D under consideration right now. Get to 10D.
Mayor and members of council, item 10D is an update on your action at your last meeting to work towards the continuation of the South County Fire Authority for continuing fire services and to extend that JPA to January 1st of 2007. We gave you a staff report that provided you with some information on the work that staff has done between your last meeting and today. We were also cognizant of the fact that your next meeting is going to be focused on the artificial turf question, so we thought it was important to bring that to you tonight. I, for purposes of the time, I won't go into the detail of the items in the report. It talks about the financial impact of the proposal and the assessment district, and we can get into some of that if you want. I think the most significant thing that we bring to you tonight is a discussion of the so-called letter of agreement between the two cities, San Carlos and Belmont. You probably recall that Councilmember David's passed a motion with 10 items on it on your meeting on February 27th. That was followed on the next evening by a similar motion in the city of Belmont by Mr. Warden, one of the council members, who had 17 items on his motion. And one of the items in the Belmont motion, which we thought was well-taken, was an attempt to reconcile the two motions and ultimately put together a document, which is alternately being discussed as a letter of agreement or a memorandum of understanding consolidating the two, the two motions. San Carlos and Belmont staff have met a couple times on this issue, and we have, we believe, resolved some of the minor issues that were existed between the two motions. And also, I've been assigned to work on this on behalf of the two cities, and so on Friday, I put this together with the aid of our special counsel, Joan Casman. I've taken the 27 items and boiled them down to 14, and of the 14, I believe there are seven items that are in agreement. And you'll see in the handout that I gave you that I've basically broken out into seven items where I think there is agreement, four items where there's not agreement, which I think is our major considerations that the two cities need to work out. And then there are three other items that I think, while there are differences, I think they're more minor in nature. So that's what you see on pages one and two. And then on page three, you see the two motions by the two cities. And in the letter of agreement draft, you'll see in parentheses a reference to the various motions, you know, San Carlos number one and two, Belmont number one and two, so you can sort of cross-reference it. I think the vision that the Fire Board acting as your two-by-two committee had talked about was that they would have a series of meetings starting next Wednesday or Wednesday of this week to begin to work on the four major items of difference and also the three minor items of difference. And indeed, at their meeting last week, they did have some initial discussions about certainly the discussion of the payment of unfunded liabilities and whether that would be using the 50-50 formula in place today or the 47-53 formula proposed for going forward. And as you can see, there are three other major items that also need to be addressed. So that's, in a nutshell, where we are. We're continuing to work on the proposed assessment. We're also continuing to work on a number of other related items. Tomorrow, for example, the staffs of the two cities will be working on budget questions, not only the question of the budget starting on July 1st, which is kind of a status quo budget, but also the budget assuming that the proposed revenue measure passes. And what we're also thinking of doing is projecting that over a five- or 10-year period since there was interest in figuring out how much money would need to be raised over that period of time. So that's kind of where we are. And again, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have on the continuation of South County Fire Agenda item.
Okay. Questions? Brad?
I have some questions. For me, one of the major things that popped out of this, and I don't see it in here, so I guess my question is whether or not my concern is fully leading to this.
Okay.
And my concern is, when we talk about the city's ability to reassign the funds from fire services assessment to another agency.
Yes.
If we decide to broaden South County Fire or, you know, choose another method.
Yes.
And so you talk in this, in the report about separate assessment election and proceeds collection for us to retain control of the funds.
Yes.
To me, that's fundamentally important. So is that outline, in quickly scanning this because you just gave it to us, I just, I didn't see it.
We did talk at length, Councilmember Lewis, about your concerns, and we actually, at the last Fire Board meeting, had a conference call with the people at Muni Financial Services, who are the fire assessment experts. What they suggested to us, and again, we have our special counsel, Joan Casman, in the audience, if you want to hear from her on this topic as well, but the belief was that if we created two zones, A and B, and we deposited the proceeds from the Belmont zone into one zone and the San Carlos zone to the other, and Joan can correct me if I'm wrong, but if we defined the Belmont Fire District and the city of San Carlos, as I believe the term was, the underlying beneficiaries of the assessment, that we could, in fact, keep control of the funds. Is that a fair statement, Joan?
Yes. I think that's fair, but I...
Come on, come on up, Joan.
Hi, I'm Joan Casman. I'm with Hanson Bridgett and serve as your special counsel on this particular matter. I think it's unclear legally, at least I haven't found any law, any authority or any example where an assessment was formed by one district and then the assessment authority was transferred to other agencies. That is not to say it can't be done, and I think what our consultant was saying, although I was hearing it third-hand, I didn't have the opportunity to discuss directly with the consultant on this issue, they were feeling as if it could be done and if it was clearly articulated in the governing documents and the brochures that go out with the assessment to the voters. And so the underlying concept of what might happen upon dissolution was made clear that certainly this would be a foundation upon which to go forward on that basis. But I mean, I have to say, it's not without risk. It's never been...
Sure.
...done to my knowledge.
There's just, there's several scenarios that, to me, make it, make it important. That's why I just, I don't know the right way for us to get about it, to get it done. But, you know, first of all, there's been talk about regionalization, so it'd be great if we didn't have to go back to the voters to do another, you know, measure. It's going to take an enormous amount of time and effort and expense and all to do this if we get this done. So I would, you know, given the fact that maybe within 10 years, we could see regionalization happen, I think it's important for us to have flexibility in the language.
Absolutely.
So that's certainly important to me. I'm sorry, were you going to say something?
No, I fully agree that your ability to maintain control of these revenues.
Right.
I guess the question is, would it be necessary for the two agencies, San Carlos and the Belmont Fire Protection District, to have a separate or a subsequent election after this or...
Right.
Because in essence, what we would be going forward with is a South County Fire Protection Agency as the assessing authority.
So maybe you can help me understand this because I think this also made, to me, seem very important, and that is, if the Belmont part of the assessment failed and the San Carlos part of the assessment succeeded, then again, it seemed to me that we would want the flexibility to move forward on something at that point immediately without having to do another, you know, assessment. So in other words, in that scenario, we could then immediately start negotiation with whoever, you know, it could be Samhitaire, Redwood City, CDF, whoever, whatever we decided, and get moving because we would have the money and we could, to start to be able to do it.
Yes, I understand, I understand, and we, I heard you loud and clear at the last meeting.
I don't mean...
And I was working with the staff to make sure that we were dealing with the consultant to see how, how we could achieve that end because I agree, it's very important. You know, one way to go about this, I think it's been discarded for the moment politically, but one way to go about this is to have the Fire Protection District assess and to have the city of San Carlos assess, have two separate assessments. Now, I understand that we're coming together, but have each agency, each separate member agency assess and have the revenues come to those agencies, and then those agencies take that revenue with whatever other revenue each agency will need and pay South County Fire Protection for the services rendered pursuant to the Joint Powers Authority. Now, that would be very clear.
I see.
And no one would argue with that. But now, if you're going to go forward with an engineer's report structured on a cost-benefit analysis wherein South County is the assessing agency.
Right.
And have these two different zones, and if one fails and the other does not, then have the South County transfer that authority they've gotten through this election to another agency. I think that's unclear.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the other aspect of your question, Councilmember Lewis, has to do with your example about measure passing in one's, one agency and failing in another. And that is another thing that we've been wrestling with because what we've been told is if South County Fire is the assessing agency and it failed in one agency and passed in the other, it's still, the measure of success is in both agencies. So you could have a scenario, if you did it together, where if it, as you, in your example, it passed in San Carlos and failed in Belmont, it would still take effect in both cities. Whereas if each agency did it separately, then obviously it would, as you suggest, go forward in San Carlos and not in Belmont. This is all about how you structure it. In other words, are you having one election or two? And so there's a trade-off. The flip side of that, as was brought up at the two-by-two committee, was if you do two separate elections and the assessment engineer does two separate assessment calculations, you could have a scenario where the assessment rate was different in the two cities, and that was the comment that Joan made about the political realities, that it might be difficult to have a situation where one agency was, you know, the citizens of one city were paying more than the other. So there are a series, I think, of questions that we're going to have to bring to you and both councils are going to have to decide, and these are, some of the ones you're raising are excellent.
Okay. So, yeah, I guess I was just wondering whether or not those would be, you know, addressed in letter agreement issues, major or minor issue there, or whether or not that's a separate issue, but...
I think we could do it either way, although the other point at which I think we will get into some more detail about the assessment is the way the assessment process works is once, once an assessment engineer is hired, there's a period of four to eight weeks when they calculate the assessment. And once that is finished, then it comes back to both cities to decide whether you do a joint election or you do it separately. The reason I think it's important right now for us to explore this question is we haven't yet engaged the engineer, and if you want to look at both, you know, scenarios, we might want to amend that company's contract to look at the election both ways, the South County election and a separate election. Might cost us a little more, but it'll give you more choices in a month or two.
Just...
Yeah, I think this would be a direction that we would want to give to our two-plus, two-by-two committee members to take back and consider is that the direction of the council as a whole is, does it make sense to have one, just one assessment district that we win or lose based on participation of both cities and we're locked into South County Fire Authority? And if the future was more regionalization, that entire agency would then have to go in along with that associated funding to gather towards a more regional solution. And that's very different than what I think I heard... And that's very different than what I think I heard, well, I mean, that's consistent with what I think, I thought we were doing, but I like your approach as well, which allows us the ability to continue to fund, you know, basically, try to raise money to fund fire protection within San Carlos, and then hopefully Belmont's doing the same thing, and then we pull the funds together, and-
Right. And I guess all I'm saying right now is, I don't know that you necessarily have to make that decision tonight, but what you may want to do is, if you are giving direction to the Two by Two reps, you may want to suggest that they have the assessment engineer explore both scenarios, albeit that's going to cost us a little more.
We are, on Wednesday, having a-
Right.
...special meeting of the Two by Two, Bob and I. And we will be working on the, the whole purpose of that meeting is to work on this letter of agreement, or the MOU. I think it's a critical issue. In fact, I think it's so critical that we could make a decision on it as a council to go one way on that, and it could break the whole deal, quite frankly. And I can't say that it would necessarily, but I think it could potentially. If we insisted that we're going to, you know, run our own campaign here in San Carlos and have our own assessment district, and keep, you know, it's going to be all separate, and Belmont's going to do the same thing tandem, but separate, quite frankly, I don't know how, what kind of response we would get at the Two by Two, or from Belmont as a whole, their five council members, if we were to take that route. But it's, I do think we need to have a decision on that. And let me ask a question of Joan that might help clear this up. And that is-
Just to respond too, just, I want to be clear. I realize, as I'm sort of pressing on this, it can start to sound separatist, and that's really not the spirit of what I'm trying to say at all. I'm just, I'm just trying to go to efficiency of effort-
That's true.
And ultimate stability in this whole situation. If we're going out for an assessment and making sure that we really have, you know, sort of a long-term plan, not just a short-term plan, and we have Plan Bs as well, just because we're in a situation where, you know, it's a little bit difficult. But this is not at all separatist. I think this, we're doing exactly the right thing in trying to make this thing work.
Okay. Let me ask a question of Joan that might help clarify this, at least in one scenario. Joan, could we have something on the voter-
Materials.
Yeah, materials. Well, actually, a box where you're voting yes or no on a question, and the question would be that if South County were to dissolve, for whatever reason, even if the, say, the assessment failed in, as, you know, use Brad's scenario, let's say the assessment failed in Belmont, but it passed in San Carlos, and Belmont said, this sounds awful, I'm not trying to put a situation on them, but let's say that that happened, and Belmont said, "This isn't at all what we were expecting out of our citizens. We're done here. We're not going forward with South County. We want out, and, you know, we're back to where we started." So for whatever reason, if the assessment, or if South County were to dissolve, come to dissolution again, could there be a question on the ballot that said that? If South County dissolved, are you in favor of the San Carlos, you know, residents in San Carlos, are you in favor of continuing the assessment authority and transferring it to the City of San Carlos as the authority, the agency with the authority? Can that be a question on the ballot?
You certainly could put any questions you wanted on the ballot. I guess the issue is, would it be legally enforceable and binding in the event it took place? And I guess the concern is, the law is very clear on the whole mechanics of an assessment, and how you build the record, and you have to have an engineer's report. And the question would be, would the fundamentals and the mechanics have been the same if it had been San Carlos as opposed to South County sponsoring this assessment? And so, you know, the idea of just having, asking voters, you know, "Would you like this transferred?", I think the law would say, well, did you do what you needed to do for San Carlos to be the assessing agency at the outset? And I guess that's the question that we would have to look at.
Well, I just, I just think, the more you talk about, and I know you're not going for separate, I know you're not, the more you make it complicated, the more it's a problem. You've got to have, in my opinion, the KISS method. We're either in this together, or we're not in it together. Now, my, a question I have, if we vote for the assessment, and we get the assessment, okay, we just go out like we thought we were going to, and it's $100 a house, $84, whatever it is, and all the rest, and it wins, okay? Now we're South County Fire, we're back together. Three years from now, we go, you know, this isn't working. We don't want to be South County Fire anymore. What happens to the assessment? What's your opinion? Can we keep, does it separate out? Does it revert back? What happens to it? Does it stop?
Well, that's the issue we're discussing. I mean, I think the issue, what I think we're going to be very clear on in the Joint Powers Agreement to be negotiated, is that the revenues and the assets coming from the different zones to South County, whatever is available upon dissolution, would go back to the two different agencies. That's clear.
Yeah.
The issue is prospectively, the issue is going forward, could South County, which is being dismantled, then take its authority as an assessing agency and say, "Okay, now we're going to give it to our member agencies." I mean, that's the issue.
And it's never been contested in a court of law, so we don't know.
Yeah, I, it's never been done, is the problem. I mean, I understand politically, and certainly, we're here to make your will, your political will, happen. I understand politically. If the desire is to have as much control, and, you know, to truly look at kind of the financial needs of the individual member agencies, which are different, your capacity to fund this fire service is not the same, and has different considerations than the Belmont Fire Protection District. They just are. You guys are in different financial conditions, and you have different financial circumstances. You're funding from a general fund, they're funding from a tax base. So, you know, if it is the desire to maintain full flexibility and control, the best way to assure that would be having separate assessments. I mean, if that is the, now, if the overriding desire is to keep South County together, and your fear is, that won't happen this other way, then we need to do everything we can in a situation where we have no legal guidance, to try to make that flexibility and control happen.
Isn't our real intent, though, to raise money to continue fire protection for the City of San Carlos? Whether that happens through South County, whether it happens through internal, whether it happens through another agency, isn't that really the intent?
Well, I think that is one of the philosophical questions the council has to answer. Because, again, I think that the dilemma we have, and I think Joan is right, when we asked the assessment engineer last week, he said, "I believe it's possible, but it's never been done before." So it may be the case that if you-
What hasn't? I'm sorry. What hasn't been done?
Trying to do an assessment through South County, or an agency like it, but yet have the money revert later on if South County goes away.
See, we just make it very complicated doing that. Now, we want to save South County. We're in bed to gather on this. We've agreed to proceed. But we also know that, you know, it just comes up for review again in five years. In the meantime, we need to continue to protect our citizens, we need to continue to build a fund, and offer fire protection. So, you know, if we go out and ask them, I think the citizens will see, yeah, that's what we want to do. How you do it is something else, but that's what we want to do.
Yeah.
I agree. I mean, part of this is like, this is an assessment for fire services. We want to raise them up. We think the best way to increase the fire services is for South County to stay together. We think that's the best possible choice at this point in time for these assessment funds. In the future, whether it's five years, you know, the sunset of this, or whether it's regionalization, or whatever, flexibility is the key issue there. Then the other thing is, just to revert this, so we don't get into, you know, the separate, too much of a separate thing, is if it fails in San Carlos, but it passes in Belmont, then what happens to South County?
Well, I think that there are two things. Number one is, if the overall vote is more than a majority, the two agencies could vote to do the assessment. And that's the other thing that I need to make clear about the assessment. The assessment is a two-step process. The first is, you have to see if there's a majority against it. If there is, the assessment dies right there. Assuming there's not a majority against it, and to use your example, Councilmember Lewis, it could be the case that if Belmont votes 80% yes and 20% no, and San Carlos votes opposed, but yet, overall, it still passes, the Fire Board, the four fire commissioners, could still impose the assessment, but then, really, the burden shifts to the two San Carlos reps and the two Belmont reps. They could impose it, but it would be politically difficult, I would think.
Okay, because, so it's the-
That would be step two.
So it's the assessment of the entire district, the combination of both cities, and majority.
Those four fire commissioners would have the right to impose it, but they wouldn't have to.
But that's if you do the separate zones.
Either way.
Either way. You're saying that we go out in just a normal way, that we thought we were going to go out for the assessment?
That's correct.
You're saying one city doesn't pass, and then one city does?
That's right. What I'm saying is that if you don't have a majority protest-
I understand.
-then it's up to the fire commissioners, because they're the ones that are levying it, so those four people.
Right.
And so then, it gets to be a very difficult political situation, I would think, for the two representatives from the city where the measure failed.
I see.
Are they going to move forward with the assessment anyway, defying the will of their voters or not? I mean, it could happen on paper.
The final legal step is for the assessing agency, and in this case, I think we are tentatively looking at South County, to pass a final resolution establishing the assessment. And that can only be done if you have a majority assessment in favor. So what we're saying is, the story closes if it fails, if it's defeated by the voters. If it's approved, there's a final step. So there still is some discretion. If it's approved, it doesn't mandate the assessment.
Through the chair, I should indicate that one of the issues that we discussed about, or discussed at the Two Committee level, related to the amount of money that was going to be raised by the measure, and we don't know yet exactly how that split is going to come down. We haven't got the assessment engineer to work yet. That contract is expected to be before the Two and Two Committee next week, or actually tomorrow, Wednesday. I'll get there. Soon, yeah. That's a critical factor here, because all of the assumptions that we've been working with, relating to what our assumptions are, regarding our budget scenario, regarding the assessments that we expect, are predicated upon a formula that was somewhat similar to the parcel tax that was attempted a couple of years ago. And the assessment district is a totally different animal. It's a different way of looking at things. You have to have a relationship between the benefit and the service that is being paid for. If, you know, so if you get, you know, your San Carlos hat on, and take your South County hat off for just a second, on the one hand, if the formula changes in such a way that San Carlos residents pay more, which is how the existing formula is anticipating, 1.9 million for San Carlos, 1.1 million for Belmont, each city would get the credit for that amount of money. And the negotiations all went forward on that formula being what we were working with. Well, the end result of that is that if we're getting credit for the 1.9 million, that's a lot of money that comes off of our share of the formula, which lowers our general fund obligation that has to come from another source. Now, if that formula changes, though, so that it's 1.5 and 1.5, or something like that, on the one hand, San Carlos residents are paying less, but on the other hand, your general fund obligation just went up a half million dollars. And so that, you know, there are a number of factors at play here. We don't have case law with respect to the concept that is being pursued. We think that there are ways that we can write it that might get you there. We haven't talked about a validation action, but there might be a legal mechanism by which you could actually have it tested in court before the, you know, somebody challenges it later. You might be able to protect yourself a bit better with that mechanism. But ultimately, it comes down to a question, I think, as to whether or not, you know, is the whole goal of this to save South County Fire, and are you willing to commit these funds to South County Fire, or is it to provide fire services for the City of San Carlos residents? And you're trying, see, the danger, if you go with the latter, is that the assessment engineer could come in and say that the formula is a little different in Belmont than it is in San Carlos. It might be $70 a house in one area, $84 in another area. The commercial rates might be different, because the assessment is based upon a different formula for that particular city. And then there's the political issue as to whether that's something you can sell or not, because you both now are selling something that's a different rate, a different variable in your own respective communities.
Brad, as much as you would like the flexibility built in, and I think you can see the legal difficulty of, well, there's a legal difficulty of going out as one, as just a South County Fire, okay, and have the engineer look at it that way, just region-wide between the two cities. And then, on the other hand, there's the political difficulty of going out with separate assessments, each running our own campaigns parallel. I would propose to you that if we went forward as South County Fire, one assessment district, and it passed, and we all moved forward happily, but five years down the road, we said, "We're back to dissolution again for whatever reason," or there's some other regional thing going on that we, you know, want to move forward with both Belmont and San Carlos, yes, it's difficult, there's difficulty in passing an assessment, but I would suggest to you that, once people are paying something, and if they were expecting to pay it for 10 years, let's say we ran a 10-year assessment, and then we get five years, and we're not going to complete it, there would be some costs involved in hiring an engineer again, and there'd be a little work going out with a political campaign, but I would suggest to you, it would not be as difficult as the first time, because people are already paying it, and they understand what you're trying to do, that things have changed, and, you know, you need to pay this, and so forth, so.
Right. I guess the other thing I would clarify, too, to get back to one of the city manager's points, is because we don't have the engineer's report, until we have that, we won't know how much money flows to each agency, and we did talk about that a little bit in the report. There is a presumption that if you use the parcel tax, which of course requires a two-thirds vote, but you can pretty much design what the rates are, and that was the $84 of parcel and 12 cents for commercial, you can design it so that San Carlos gets the 1.9 million that the city manager referred to, and Belmont gets 1.2. But with the assessment process, where it's a majority of the property owners based on the values, you pretty much have to wait, it's almost like waiting for, you know, a verdict from the jury. You have to wait for the jury to come in, if you will. And as Mark suggested, it may be the case that the amount of money raised in San Carlos is only 1.5 million. So now, suddenly, San Carlos has a bill for 1.9, we only have 1.5, and we have a gap. And I think one of the things that you may see is, in a month or two, when this report comes back, the councils in each city may also have to come up with a decision about, do they still want to go with the assessment model, or do they want to go back to the parcel tax model, because they have more flexibility in what the rates are, and how much money flows to each city? So I think a key piece of all of this is going to be hiring that engineer this week or next, as the Two by Two meets, and then getting these numbers, because a lot of this, we're just speculating until we see what those numbers are.
Right, and I certainly trust the Two by Two to continue on down this path. It sort of sounds like, at least in this discussion, is if we go the assessment model, it's going to be too complex to try to make this thing perhaps have long-term flexibility, so it's assessment for South County, and then if we decide as South County that there's a better solution down the road, then there's going to be another assessment or whatever for that. And that just may be the methodology if we go down this path. Great, thanks.
Thank you, Brad. It's good, very good points and questions that you bring up, by the way, so appreciate it. Okay, any other discussion items on this?
So the four unresolved major items are still on the table for discussions?
That's correct. And the thought is, is that the, those are items that the staff was not able to reconcile between San Carlos and Belmont, so presumably, the four council members will attempt to resolve the four major issues and the three minor issues, and then, in the next couple weeks, they will bring them back to the full Belmont Council and the full San Carlos Council for concurrence. And then if we have that, we'll draft a final letter of agreement, and then both councils, the theory is, will adopt the exact same document.
I do want to ask a question on that of Tom, because it's the only way to do this, and, you know, we have to do all this publicly. I can't ask you on the side, Tom, so we'll do it now. Your proposal that we all voted and approved on, made the approval of, did talk about the continuing the current JPA until a certain date. And Belmont's was different. Belmont had it that we would enter into a new JPA agreement earlier. My interpretation of that was that you had that point in there, because you want to see that our budget and our spending will continue at a 50/50 pace, if you will, until the assessment passes, and we're under then a new budget. the assessment passes and we're under then a new budget essentially. Is that correct?
Well, more or less. I really didn't see the JPA changing until there was money to do the job. So we could draw up a new JPA, but what does it mean if there's no money to run it? And it seemed to me that the real trigger was the money on the table, which means that the assessment would pass. So I just thought it logical to carry on what we're doing under the current JPA until there is a trigger to proceed, which is the election, successful election.
Right.
And then I felt that since we are in the 50-50 deal, we've been there for, you know, forever, it would be fair and appropriate for both parties to carry on with that, rather than trying to divide under some new formula before we actually go ahead. It just makes sense to bring it all to a conclusion at the time of the election and move forward.
Now, a question, because Mr. Warden, in his talking to us at, I don't know if it was from my attending their council meeting and seeing this discussed, or if it was at the fire board meeting, but either case, he's really pushing that we do the JPA agreement ahead of time, because when we go out for an election on the assessment, the more that we have firmed up and in place, the better that looks politically. So I wanted to ask you, would it be, would your intentions be fulfilled if we did write a JPA agreement, had it in place in time to pick up the ball after June 30th, when we have the dissolution or, you know, the end of South County? If that new JPA agreement talked about keeping ourselves to the 50-50 until the assessment passed and the money's in hand?
Yeah, so in effect, I mean, we might have an effective JPA, or a draft JPA, or something else that is in place to take over when the time comes, huh?
Yes.
I think that's...
But it would have the stipulations on the funding, that we continue under the current budget and current 50-50 format until the passage of the assessment.
I think that's a fair approach. It does seem to me that a memo of understanding does the same thing, but, you know, if a formal JPA is needed to get everyone at a comfort level, I don't have a problem. I just personally would feel, again, in the spirit of fairness, that we don't trigger the new formulas until there's a new program.
Right, okay, fair enough. And you're correct that, and the city manager has advised me anyways in private discussions, that actually getting the JPA finalized and written in time for the information time of the election, in other words, when we're out campaigning, could be pretty tight, because the campaign would need to take place in May, and that would mean having the JPA agreement finalized, written, all the dots, all the i's dotted, t's crossed, right before May.
What's the proposed election date?
Brian, help me out on that.
I think it's in your handout, but I believe it's in July.
It's in July.
You can choose that, the important thing is that there has to be forty-five days from the time the South County Board passes a notice of intent for the materials to go out, and then you can kind of set your election date forty-five days after that.
I think when I was thinking of the election, I was thinking of something further downstream. I mean, if you can move it up closer, so much is better for everyone. And I wouldn't propose that you delay your new JPA beyond the point where the election is successful. I mean, that can be pretty much a simultaneous thing, give a few weeks maybe, but kick it off.
Yeah, I think the dilemma, again, that the fire board folks have, and I suspect you folks may have as well, is that on the one hand, it's going to take us a month or two to get the assessment estimates, and then almost as soon as you have those, you're going to have to make a decision, are you going to do a parcel tax and an assessment, and then launch right into your campaign? So you don't really have a whole lot of slack, if that's the right term, in the schedule, maybe a week or two. So I think that the, getting the assessment process going is critical. And I think we did hear a little bit on the conference call last week from the assessment firm, that in the perfect world, you would normally have more campaign time than what you've built into this schedule. So it is going to be tight.
Just to comment on the campaign time, I mean, if what you say is true, that we could have a negotiated JPA, but it would only take effect upon the completion of the vote, then we can also sort of come to independent determination of what the right campaign length is, because I really think educating the public is going to be key to passing this. So, yeah, I hate to, I don't want to give that short shrift, because I think it needs, I think people really see the merits of this, but I do think it's going to take some education.
Yeah, I agree with you.
Yeah, I think the trade-off, Councilmember Lewis, is that if you go with the eight-week timeline, which is what you have here, it's tight, but then you can start collecting the money at the end of this calendar year. If you take longer, which again, it's another trade-off both councils have to consider, then you don't see the money until next year. And obviously, under the new formula, San Carlos at least would not be able to pay the additional $2 million a year until the assessment passed. So, you know, that's the constraint of the eight weeks.
Which is also a constraint of, or a problem with doing a parcel tax, that has to be on a special election date, is that right? You can't just, like the assessment, you can say, we're going to, here's going to be, as council has already advised us, you can pick your date, your time, this is your election day, this is when stuff's going to come in. Parcel tax, that has to go on a ballot of a special election or a normal election.
Right, right. We would have to approach the county and set up a special election, you'd have to pay for that. On the other hand, you wouldn't have to wait the eight weeks for the engineer, another trade-off.
So, Brian, just a, the only question I have here is item three under minor items to be worked out. I know Bill Dickinson has asked for this, and I see the merits of it. Is it possible to do with everything else we're doing before the election?
Well, I think that's one of the reasons that the two staffs didn't put it under a settled item. We had the same question, Mayor Grokot, that you had. We weren't sure there would be enough time. And really, the question is, would you want it absolutely have to be before the election, or would it still be of value before the, you know, before the, later on? We thought at the staff level, you could clearly do it, you know, after the campaign started, we weren't so sure you could do it prior to your informational campaign. And I think the thing we were kicking around, and I believe last week, the two-by-two was kicking around as well, is the thought was, I believe the value of the operational audit is something you could tout in your campaign. And if it wasn't done prior to that, how much value did it have? I think if you take the time constraint of having it before your informational campaign starts, we could certainly do one. It's just a matter of, I'm not sure we can do one in time for your informational efforts.
Okay, sounds tight. I might be asking the question again Wednesday.
Through the chair, it's five minutes to eleven.
Yes, and we don't, I feel badly for these two gentlemen, who I know have stayed through this whole process, to speak on the next item.
I think we ought to extend the meeting to a time to be determined.
Yes.
Do we have to announce a time?
No.
So we just extend the meeting until we're finished with the meeting? What do you think?
Yes.
We can do that, so is...
One more item, right?
One more item? You guys okay with that? Yes? Okay.
Brad just said, I think he said yes, so it's fair.
I know Brad's really suffering over there. Okay, so that concludes this item. Thank you, Brian. Now we can move to item out of order, 10C. Do we have someone from staff presenting this item? Yes, we do.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, one of the items that came out of our strategic planning process was the thought that we could authorize staff to advertise and schedule interviews for city council appointment of an ad hoc creek and watershed advisory committee to provide input to the city council on creek restoration and watershed issues. That is the objective right out of the work program. And we, at the staff level, have been trying to put together a program, an estimate of costs and the like, but it's difficult to do unless we're able to tie down exactly what it is that this committee would do. We, in talking about creek and watershed issues, I'm not sure whether or not we're talking about creek restoration, whether or not we're talking about drainage issues. And so we're looking for some guidance from the city council tonight with respect to exactly what it is that your intent was with the idea that this committee might be considered. And then we would strongly recommend that if we form the committee and advertise that you give us some guidance with respect to the expected timeframes for the committee to be in place, what its expected charge would be and what its deliverables would be. One of the things, and we mentioned it a little bit earlier, I asked a city clerk to give me some kind of a sense of how many commissions, boards, and the like that we staff, and just in a few minutes, we came up with seventeen, and I know that there are more than that, just from having looked at the list. And so, and all of that is good in terms of being able to get citizen participation and input and the like, but if this is intended as an ad hoc committee, if it's intended for a specific charge, let us know what that is, we'll build it into the advertisement for the position that would speak to filling this particular committee. So with that, we would be looking for city council guidance as to how to proceed.
Okay, and with that, I'm going to ask on my behalf if Len Maderman would come forward, because some of the things that Mark has indicated that are questions, I believe he has answers for. I will admit, I've been talking to Len about this idea, and he is well-informed on it and has material ready. If you could keep your comments, obviously, we're getting to a late hour, as brief as possible, but fulfill your needs of presentation.
Yeah, I will keep these brief. Thank you, Mayor Grokot, and council members for putting this on the agenda.
Quickly and for the record.
Yeah. Len Maderman, resident of San Carlos. Essentially, this item was an outgrowth of conversations, as Mayor Grokot indicated, that he and I have had, originally started around the flooding issue, and that's really where I want this to end, where my recommendation is that something like this end up, is that the issue of flooding in this town, it's significant to those who are impacted by it, and if you live or work in a certain part of town, you're impacted by it. And the issue of flooding is also closely related to other issues, including creeks and water, and where water comes from and where it goes, and how we develop on land also very much affects flooding. And so, you know, my recommendation, getting back to what the city manager just mentioned, is that the city council create a committee to bring specific recommendations to you that take a comprehensive look at the quality and quantity of water in our creeks, and the land use policies and practices that affect the creeks and affect flooding, to find solutions and to find funding to address these issues. The city council, in this current city council, in your first meeting in December, passed a resolution, Resolution 98-205, and it joined San Carlos into a regional hazard mitigation plan, and the charge, that was drafted by ABAG, and the charge of that plan, the charge of this ad hoc committee could be summed up in ABAG's plan, which has the following strategies for developing policies to reduce flooding, conduct a watershed analysis, examine the impact of development, and pursue funding. And I think those could be three important goals. Conduct a watershed analysis, which many communities do, and it's not unusual, and there are lots of guidelines for how to do that, but the city doesn't have that. And there are enough creeks, and there are enough problems with those creeks, and there are enough people that care about the creeks, that I think it's worth us taking a look, a comprehensive look at where water comes from and where it goes in this town, and are there opportunities for us to protect our natural environment? And the second point being examine the impact of development, there's a lot that could be said about that, and about how planning is done in this town, but I believe, I think as you know, that the amount of, the number of projects that have relied on exceptions to our general plan is well beyond what's appropriate. And those exceptions were asked for because of the impact that they would have in, to contravene the goals of our general plan. And I believe that it's a fair thing for this council to look at the general plan, and to look at the general plan in the context of how that impacts our creeks and how that impacts flooding. So I guess what I would say is, let's harness the energy and the sophistication of the residents of San Carlos, and have them come together. Developers, I would recommend that the council look for people from the development community, people who are engineers, people who are concerned about the environment. Sometimes those will all be in the same person, sometimes they'll be in different persons, but look for the knowledge base that's in this town, and utilize that knowledge base to contribute to your policies, rather than have people come up here in opposition to what's being proposed to you, and have to speak against what you may or may not want to vote on that's coming up. So harness that energy and put it to good use. I would recommend a limited duration for this committee. It's not a planning commission, it doesn't go on forever. It has a set time, and it's charged with developing policies on, as I said, flooding, land use, and creeks. Perhaps eighteen months. I think much less than that would be hard to accomplish its goals, much more than that would become institutionalized, and I don't recommend that. I recommend that the city, that you ask city staff to support its work, and I understand what the city manager mentioned about, that there are a lot of commissions and groups in town, or committees that the city staff support. I would say that this would be an important one, and it would be worth their support. And there are enough items that come on your agenda every single meeting related to development and public works projects, that this should be something that's on the forefront of their minds anyway. And, let's see, I guess as far as cost, I don't imagine, other than city staff time, I don't imagine a cost during this fiscal year. There's a possibility of cost down the road as funding is looked for, but I don't see it being a big cost factor. And the results of the group, I foresee it could be broad, bold, and constructive proposals to you, to help you sort out the decisions that you need to make on flooding, on land use, and on creeks, and the relationship between the three of those. So I'd be glad to answer questions and...
Just a couple items I have. I lost you after examine impact of development. You had three bullet points.
There were three bullet points, and this comes from ABAG.
What was the third one, quickly?
This comes from ABAG, and this is something that was endorsed by the city staff and by the council a couple months ago. And this is conduct a watershed analysis, and examine the impact of development, and pursue funding that can aid in flood prevention and creek improvements. And I know that, I know of opportunities for funding that are available, some of those opportunities are available because of that action you took in December. And I know other people who are aware of other funding sources that are available. And, you know, there was, we had a discussion about this last time I was at council, which was several council meetings ago, and that was, let's take advantage of the people that are in this town, and let's take a comprehensive look at things through the eyes of those people.
And then the other one was, under members, you said developers, environmentalists, and...
Engineers.
Engineers.
That's simply people with different professional expertises that I think could be brought to the air.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Sure. Those are my questions. Anybody else?
Len, how do you do the watershed study if you don't have money? Are you folks finding to do that on your own, or...
Well, I think if a group is given the information that the city has, the watershed study could be done. And that's what I meant by, there's no hard costs right now, but there could be in the next fiscal year, if this is, let's say, an eighteen-month group, that there could be costs associated with that. But I would recommend, or I would submit to the council, that the time and money spent on a watershed study will be well worth it over the next, because, you know, there are projects that come to you with regularity that ask for, in fact, there was a study that was just completed this past couple weeks about Cordillares Creek, and there's a proposal to do a drainage study this summer. I mean, there are projects that come to you with regularity that don't take a look at the broader issues out there and how all these projects might relate to one another, because water, water in Cordillares relates to water in Belmont when it starts coming together towards the bay. So, you know, it's not, doing a watershed analysis doesn't have to be expensive, it's probably not free, but it's a good use of resources. It's a better use of resources than the piecemeal patchwork approach that we've had in this town for the last decade. It's my opinion.
So this implies that, well, it would have simply that we've got a problem. Yeah, I think the bulk of the residents wouldn't perceive a problem, and perhaps the bulk of a lot of people wouldn't perceive a problem. I understand the flooding situation, but describe a little bit what our problem is, and what we're really trying to solve.
What are we trying to solve? As I said, this was begun to look at the problem, so-called problem of flooding. The, you cannot take a serious look at flooding without looking at water, or without looking at how you use the land. That's all I'm saying. I'm not trying to address a problem of our creeks. There's not a problem of our creeks. People have different opinions about how our creeks look or what they should look like, but that's not, that's not the emphasis of this committee. And that's why, as I mentioned in the beginning, I think that the item, from my perspective, and what I believe the conversation, at least that I initiated at the strategic planning retreat, was heading towards. retreat, was heading towards, is that it's not a creek issue, it's a, it's a flooding issue that cannot ignore creeks or land use.
Uh, yeah, there is other public comment. Drew Shell. Thank you, Len.
My name is Drew Shell. In addition to being city resident, I am the chair of the San Carlos Natural Resources Task Force, which is a citizen body sponsored by the city and chartered with developing natural resource policy recommendations for our community. At its last meeting, the task force briefly discussed the proposal for a city-backed committee focused on creek and flooding issues and concluded the following: Our task force spans a broader set of issues than the proposed committee would focus on. Our task force is oriented more towards environmental, recreational, and conservation issues, so is unlikely to address the full range of flooding and technical issues that would be covered by the proposed committee. And while our task force may address at a high level some of the same issues as the proposed committee, the limited two-month lifespan of our task force will prevent us from covering such issues in depth, and there are aspects of such issues which we may not have time to address at all. Given these factors, we see the formation of such a committee as a natural and desirable extension of the efforts undertaken within our task force. The existence of such a committee would allow our task force to focus on its near-term, high-level policy goals, securing the knowledge that any important creek and flooding issues we are unable to address or formalize can be handed off to that committee for more detailed discussion and analysis. Likewise, we see our own committee as, as providing a valuable head start on at least some of the issues that the proposed committee would address. With this in mind, the Natural Resources Task Force welcomes and endorses the idea of establishing a more formal, longer-lived committee to address the creek and flooding issues that have been a serious concern in our city for many years now. And if you would like to know any more of the reasoning behind those conclusions, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but that kind of sums up our position right now.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions? No? Okay, very good. Okay. What's the pleasure of the council, or should we discuss this a little bit? I know we're tired, but get this item done, we can all go home. So let me just review for you, just quickly, the notes I took from when Len was, was talking. He's talking about looking at the quality and quantity of water in our creeks, and some of that is looking at, as I understand it, where, where the water comes from, so you have to look at the, the whole watershed, and then where's it trying to go to, and what, in some instances, impedes its flow, you know, where, what's, because that's what causes some of the problems with flooding that we have. Look at funding possibilities that we might be able to get through federal resources or state, and I know Len knows about some of that, because that's kind of work he does. And then, following the passage of our resolution with A-BAG on the regional hazard mitigation plan, that this group would look at, well, they would conduct watershed analysis, look at having that done, examine the impact of development on the watershed, and then pursue the funding. And then he, he talked about members of this would be developers, environmentalists, and engineers, and, and what he's trying to do there, I think, is get actually some antagonists together and force them to collaborate and come up with solution. That's what you want to do, rather than have, you know, for instance, load it up with environmentalists, and they come up with solutions that developers are not going to be happy with. Let's get those people in a room talking together and working on a solution. And then he, he talked about limited duration, setting a time, 18 months or something of that sort, that they would do this work. And the only funding that would come from it currently, or the money would be spent, would be staff support, at least in this fiscal year, and then in the, in the following fiscal year, actually the same thing, until they could get funding for, from outside sources for, for any projects that they want to do. Like, for instance, Tom, you mentioned the, you know, how do you do, how do you pay for a watershed analysis? Well, you, you try to get some grant funding for that, is, is my understanding of it. So that's the proposal.
I guess my concern is that, you know, what do we do with it when we get it? I can appreciate some of the problems, I can appreciate an advocacy group really going for some solutions. But I've heard a lot of solutions regarding creeks that quite honestly, I don't quite agree with, and I, you know, I've voted against the proponents a time or two. And I'm, and I'm kind of concerned about getting in a, in a bucket where we've, we've advocated a lot of solutions, and we're not really prepared to bite the bullet and, and follow them. And that's not precluding what's happening or what might happen, but my concern is it's, I just don't know where it goes.
Well, I suppose those recommendations would come to us as a council, we could do with them as we...
I suppose.
As we wished. We've certainly bucked our, our advisory committees in the past on occasion. This wouldn't preclude us from doing it this time if we were not happy with the recommendations that come out. I, I do think, Tom, one of the, one of the benefits I see is just this, this watershed analysis part of it, because it would really help us with our planning in both engineering aspects and also any policies or ordinances we might want to, to look at. For instance, you know, like, right now, we have a creek setback ordinance, is that the right ordinance? Is the 25 feet the right number, or should it be something less? Could it be something less? Should it be something greater? Some of the issues that we wrestled with in the building ad hoc, you know, what kind of development do you allow near the creek, and do you, do you create zones where really close to the creek, you know, a deck within 18 inches is fine, but, you know, an out, you know, a tool shed or something like that in the backyard is not fine? You know, those are the things that we couldn't come up with solutions on at building ad hoc. Perhaps this group could, could help us in that, in that regard.
The, when Tom and I have been the fields committee and/or whether it's task force committee or whatever, one of the things that we invariably run into is, what's the, what's the real charge from city council? In other words, what, what are we really trying to, to solve? So I sort of appreciated Vice Mayor David's question about what is the issue? Because what can quickly happen, and, and I really think we need to address some of our flooding issues and watershed issues. So I, I think it's important, so just, let me just preface that, I, sometimes I forget to preface that. But my concern is that the scope of this can start to go really broad, which then can get into a lot of staff time. I know that, the fields committee alone, we, we probably had Barry and his group spend hundreds and hundreds of hours of staff time. So it can get really expensive and, and maybe soft dollar costs, but it's time, it's staff time and so forth. So I, I think it's critically important issue, I think we, I'd like to see constrained somehow so that either, that we make it truly ad hoc for the, and see what are the, what are these critical issues? Maybe they can come back to council in three to six months with, here's some, here's some areas that we're, we think are critical, that, that maybe need some more work or some more effort. So we have sort of a, we phase it in. I, I would just hate to commit to 18 months, and, and we're talking about pretty broad issues, you know, impact of development, land use issues, there's different ordinances, and, and it literally can, it also crosses over with, with planning and lots of other commissions and so forth. That being said, I don't think that we've got, I don't always think that our environmental review is forefront as much as I, I'd like to see it be in the city of San Carlos and these things. So I guess what I'm saying is, let's, my, my sense is to make it ad hoc, perhaps reduce the scope of it initially, and have them come back with recommendations on either to sort of figure out what would those next 12 months be, or, so they're, they're truly working at the charge of council toward problem solving, as opposed to just broadening the scope, which I just know you can get lost in a morass of more information, more information, and without any specific direction.
So they would have to report back to council on certain points?
Yeah, so the scope of work, direction from council, number of hours and dollars put to the committee.
Before we go out and interview, would it be appropriate to, to sit down with Drew and, and Len and encapsulize what we really would like, what they, help bring this whole thing together, and some bullet points that are perhaps a little more definitive, and basically set the parameters of what we're looking at? I, I just...
That could be a good idea, because then, then it would be more, we'd have direction. And it's really hard to harness these committees without direction.
Yeah.
And that would help. I also think residents that live on a creek, we should be interviewed to be members.
If I might just comment on that briefly. Your point is well-taken, and I think one of the things that, as task force chair, I'm expecting will come out of our task force, again, it's a somewhat limited timeframe, which is bounded by the interests of staff and city council to get some initial policy recommendations, but as chair, I'm also trying to make sure that our task force recognizes the things that it's not going to be able to do, and try to collate issues and present those as well. Here's things we weren't able to address, and for example, here's a recommendation of how the city might pursue those in the future. My anticipation is even without this proposal, our task force potentially would come back and say, creek issues in particular, we see not being adequately addressed, and here are the areas that we see being important to discuss, and we recommend a committee of some form with a longer duration to, to analyze those. So that, that's why I made the point in, in my comments about our task force in some ways helping lay some of the groundwork. Now, again, we're not going to be as focused on creek and flooding issues at the same level that, that committee would be, but it at least gives you a head start, and that helps dovetail into what this committee might do. Now, your idea about having that committee come back and help define and get direction, define itself and get direction from city council, I think that plays into that whole timeframe, but we're already starting to do some of that initial issue gathering right now within this existing task force.
Do you, do you see merit in getting together during the next two weeks before the next council meeting and, and just hammering out a, a list?
I'm certainly willing to do that, and I'm sure Len is as well. My only constraint with respect to, I can do that personally, but my only constraint with respect to the task force is that I can't speak for them unless I take issues to them and we agree on what we're going to do. Having said that, we're all in contact by email, and we can kind of throw some of that around, but...
They're not limited by Brown Act?
No, we're not. We actually made sure that we had comment from city attorney that we're not...
This to a close, and I see where Tom is going. I'm going to suggest, if it pleases the council, obviously, this is an interest of mine. Tom has, you know, some questions and lives on a creek. So do you want to suggest that you and I meet together with Len?
That'd be fine.
Okay, and then...
And I would suggest we, we do it quickly, and we bring it back at the next meeting.
Okay.
And let the balance of the council understand what we're doing.
Just, through, through the chair, I mean, the next meeting is kind of dedicated towards the turf issue at, at the moment, the fields issue. We'd, we'd hope to keep that particular agenda just to that singular item because of the community interest.
So our next council meeting that's more broad-based is when?
April 10th, I think, if...
April 10th? Okay, that's fine. We'll do that. If, does that please the council? Is that all right?
Does it work with you fellows? I mean, that's pushing you back a bit.
I'm sure we can manage that.
But you know, 18 months is gone before you know it, so.
Yeah.
I, I think, I think it would help. I just, I, I personally feel better about it if we just had a little better definition of what we're asking these folks to do.
Sounds fine.
We weren't doing this before, so if we're doing anything all, that's better.
No, that's true. That's true, but we would like to get a result that, that's workable, too.
Okay, thank you, Tom, for giving some direction on that, and we will then move on to, I think we are at public comment. Do we have any members from the public who would like to speak to the council? Items not on the posted agenda. I don't see anybody, so we are therefore adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you. See you, Brad.